Okay, it is six o'clock, so if you please join me and. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I call this meeting to work. I know how much your life is hard. I try. All right. So. Full call. Joe Frosty.
Yes.
Tim West.
President.
Jonathan Everett.
President.
Senator Dick. Carolyn Spies.
President.
And Emily Gruber.
Yeah.
Okay, and Sue is dealing with the family division, she will not be joining us tonight. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, no adjustments today.
Yay, okay. I will consider a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Committee meeting of February 16th, 2022 as written or with corrections.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. I have a move and a second, or is there any discussion? Okay. Yep?
I don't you have any?
I do, I did find one small error in the committee members present, I was listed twice, so I've already discussed that with Jim, and he has removed one of those. Otherwise, I didn't see any corrections that needed to be made. So. With that, any further discussion? All those in favor? My superintendent's report.
Um, I actually have just printed this before I had some things, so now I gotta try to remember what I had.
Okay.
Well, while I'm thinking of that, the, uh, did send you out a copy of the, um, the financial report from February. Budget continues to be in good shape. It was actually, I have to say, I was a little bit worried about it earlier in the week. And then Amanda and Ida and I spent some time, I spent time with both of them at separate times, and they ran projections for me. And the budget is actually in really good shape. And what I would typically say to you is, in making you, I'm thinking I need to be a little more, specific on some of these, but if you look at the percentages remaining, you know, we're almost two, we're approximately two-thirds of the way through the school year, so about 66%. You'd expect about 34% of the, um, budget remaining. And that's not totally true. That's what, that's what was causing me some angst. We have to account for some of the salaries, which is full payrolls. So, uh, I was nervous that this number that I thought was really, really good, um, wasn't so good. In fact, it isn't quite as good as it shows here, because instead of 36%, Article One, which is our biggest article, is showing 50%, but, uh, but in fact, it's still very healthy and, it'll, it'll be fine. We will have more than enough funds to cover, not an excessive amount like we had last year, but we, budget's in pretty solid shape. And I'll talk about that more when we get to the budget discussion later. Bye. I'm gonna just pull this up on my computer, because apparently I didn't print it out. Yeah, okay. The next meeting is March 16th. I will, I guess I just need to share with you, I think a lot of you are already aware that, um, my son, I had one son who was, who was just coming back from being deployed for 10 months. He's home, and he's staying home. My other son, who's a Marine, is being deployed, um, to Europe area. And at first, we thought we were, he was leaving, well, now we're not 100% sure. There's a pretty decent chance that that will conflict with our next meeting. If it does, I'm going to, um, probably join you via Zoom. I'm not canceling the meeting, I'm not going to miss his deployment either. So, I will keep you posted. I, I'm sure, I wish I could say, well, we'll just cancel the next meeting, but we have way too much. If nothing else, we need to do the budget on the 16th after our discussion tonight. So, just give you a heads up on that. The other thing is, um, oh, I just did some good news. Just found out that John Bear, the girls' hockey basketball coach at the high school, was named Coach of the Year for the Mont Belkens. So, really outstanding, very, very happy with that. I think that was because he happens to stop in the office every day, and I give him little pointers on coaching. No, but actually, and, uh, if you don't know, that the, that one of the assistant coaches is, Kenna Sousa, who played two years ago, whatever, and she thinks it's because of the great assistance that he's getting on the bench. Actually, she never said that, but Colleen might have said that. Those are all the additional things, and like I said, everything else is in my, my, uh, report that I sent out in advance. We have two resignations, Tegan Newell, Newhall, and Kristen Archer. They are taking on different positions. And that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Jim? Were either of these resignations surprising, or anything that we had any control over?
Um, no, I will, I don't mind, I mean, you're not supposed to say a lot of stuff, but Kristen has accepted a position, and she lives closer to her home, um, and the same type of position. And, uh, Tegan is on, was only with us for a few months. Really sad to see them both go, but Tegan cut a job outside of the field for significantly more money. So, can't blame her, she's a young, young story.
So, with both of these, um, departures being in the special ed department, does that leave us in a place where we're not able to provide services that we need to, to aid your effort?
No, we're good.
All right. School Committee Chair Report. I feel like I have a whole lot to say today, which normally I don't. I want to start with, um, saying that yesterday morning, right? Yesterday morning, the Winthrop School Department staff received their thank you bonuses. For those that don't remember or are aware, that was $1,000 in their paycheck. That was decided during a executive session. After thinking about all that our staff has gone through, um, extra planning, extra help with, um, emotional needs, um, we thought that that was probably the best thing that we could do to help, um, help our staff. So, unlike last year, where it was a certain amount for teachers and a different amount for other people, it was the same across the board for any staff member who is employed by the school district. There was another part associated with that, has that happened yet?
Uh, it's gonna happen tomorrow.
Okay.
And you can announce it, that's fine.
So tomorrow, um, there will be, um, a gift of some gift cards going out to individuals who we don't employ, but who do work directly with our students, like school bus drivers, and, um, the preschool teachers. Anybody else?
FMS.
The FMS.
And daycare.
Okay, and the daycare. So, um, it is less than $1,000, um, as it was last year. We don't actually employ these people, they have other employers, but, um, we do recognize that they have gone through a lot to keep this school year running for us, was a thank you. So, I did, we did receive three, um, thank yous that I just wanted to share with the board. The first was an email from Teresa Soul, saying I wanted to thank you very much for the bonus, it was very much appreciated. The second is a thank you card, um, from Marcia Lasky, that says, Superintendent Hodgkins, thank you for the extremely generous bonus, what a wonderful surprise. Thank you for always thinking of the staff at WPS. They're an amazing group of educators, thank you for everything you do for WPS. And then the last one, um, I'm not gonna read it, um, verbatim, because I don't think, based on what's in it, that that was the expectation. But this is from Jaclyn Roselle, who says, thank you very much for the bonus to our paychecks, you can't possibly know what this means to me. This bonus check came at the perfect time for us. This has been a stressful year for everyone, and it's so nice to know everyone at Winthrop Public Schools is appreciated and valued, thank you again. So, um, thank you for your thoughtfulness and your input when we made that decision, and I just wanted to make sure that you are all aware that it was, um, well received. And I was mentioning to someone how, um, kind of excited we were to be able to, to show our support this way, and how Jim almost spilled the bag at our last meeting, and I really was worried about that. So that was nice that he did. Couple other things. This afternoon, um, a diverse group of individuals with, um, community expertise met with two companies and did an interview with them about a performance contract that we had put out for RFQ. We met with both of them and, um, made a decision about which company we will be, submitting to the school board later in this, um, session to request, um, more information from them. So, um, that went, I think, really well today. We got a lot of great information from both companies. And then the final thing, um, and I kind of jumped myself a little bit on this, so I'm sorry for that. If you are on the Zoom call, please make sure that your first and last name are visible. If you aren't sure how to do that, please let our moderator know, and he can help. We appreciate that very much, thank you. For everybody on the Zoom or here, we have a lot more people here today than we normally do at our meetings, so thank you for being present and for whatever you will say, or maybe just think. We will be discussing potentially at length whether we'll be changing the mask mandate for the school or not today. That is something that we will be discussing in whole business, as we have since 2020. Every two weeks, we discuss this, so, um, and masking specifically is one of the things that we will be discussing, and we do ask that if you have anything to add to the conversation, that you are, please, um, don't use any profanity. I know sometimes when you're, when you're, um, passionate about your beliefs or your thoughts, that sometimes it's hard to find the words that you want to say, and sometimes profanity is the easiest thing to come out of your mouth, but please, um, be respectful of everyone who may or may not be, you know, in this room, or on Zoom, or may see this at a later date. As a reminder, this is, um, a meeting for us, and you are invited to join in that conversation, but ultimately, this is a decision that we will make. We will ask for your opinion and your thoughts, but not until after we have expressed our opinions and thoughts first. So when we get there, um, we will open to public comment at that time, specific to that, not only at the end of the, um, meeting like we normally do, but, um, just please keep it civil if things are being said that you don't necessarily agree with. That is not foreshadowing, I just needed to put that out there. All right, committee reports. Finance.
Sue was unable to meet tonight, so we're gonna make up that date.
Okay. Policy. Do you too?
Yep. No.
Oh, you're not, you are.
I am.
Are we doing any, um?
Policies tonight.
Policies tonight.
Clearly, we are not breaking out, are we?
We have five today.
We have five for second reading.
Okay, sorry, sorry. I thought you said we're, we met at five.
Oh, no. Yes, okay. So five for second reading, right?
Yes.
Okay. Negotiations. Joe?
Well, it's my plan to wrap up tomorrow, I didn't know anybody else coming in, but, uh, we'll get there. We want to get it done before, you know, St. Patrick's Day, we're gonna have to remove.
I, I, um, yeah, we started talking, um, about, um, the budget. Budgetary concerns at our last meeting, and, uh, or the meeting before that. And, uh, we will continue to do that until we come to consensus, and then we'll move to other pieces of the contract as well. Our hope was to be done before April vacation, and, um, we hope to be able to try to stick to that if possible, but if not, we will go with the flow as much as we need to. And for those who aren't aware, we're working on the, um, collective bargaining agreement for support staff this year. Curriculum, Maggie is not able to join us today, and I don't believe she had anything that she needed to share with us. Okay. Administrators' reports, there are none. Okay. The December 2021 Administrative Review for the Winthrop Public Schools Nutrition Program.
So I gave you a little bit of overview on that last time, but, um, Erin is here, if you want to ask her questions, or Erin, if you want to share briefly about the, uh, the audit, how the audit went?
Uh, it went very well, there were, um, some minor issues, um, but nothing that the state felt we needed to correct. It was, um, more or less my errors, for example, when we changed the menu, or we changed the, to half-days on Wednesdays, the first one in December, I had already menued as a hot meal, and when we changed to, uh, sending bag lunches home, I, um, missed a vegetable. You're supposed to serve five different vegetables in a week, and that week, the kids got double carrots, but didn't get corn. So that's the type of huge error I made in this, basically, in this review. So I think the kids all survived with double carrots that one. And the, I just want to say that the review was very difficult, because it was, um, a desktop review. In other words, the reviewer didn't come in person. I've never been through a review in Maine, but many in Massachusetts. And, um, in Massachusetts, they just come and look through your kitchen, and look through your recipe books, and everything, and, you know, basically the reviewer is doing all the work. Whereas this one, I had to send them everything. So I was required to provide them with, um, ingredient labels for every food item on the menu in the month of December. So if you think about, in your house, if, you know, you make dinner, and you use 10 ingredients in dinner, and you have to have a label for every one of those things, and that was breakfast and lunch for an entire month. So it was kind of a lot of paperwork, and I had to upload it to their website. It wasn't as simple emailing, it was, of course, going to a state website that takes forever to upload. So this is a job I'm really happy to see the end of. I'm very relieved, yes. And, um, also very pleased that there were no, um, major issues.
That's great, thank you very much, Erin, I appreciate your hard work, and I appreciate everything that you did to make that happen. And I was very pleased to hear that there were no substantial corrections that needed to be made. That was nice to hear. Whole business. Ready?
Ready.
Let us revisit the Return to School Protocol.
So, um, I, I'm sure that the public as a whole have not seen this document that just was sent out this afternoon from the Department of Education. I'm just gonna read this, it's much probably easier than trying to explain it, but I'm not gonna read the whole thing, it's lengthy, but, um, "Main Department of Health and Human Services and the Main Department of Education advise main school units and child care providers today that effective March 9th, which is a week from today, universal masking is no longer a statewide recommendation in these settings, but is optional." That's all I really need to read out of this, but prior to that, Governor Mills had released a statement, and the federal CDC had issued some guidance, and they changed the color code system to orange, yellow, and green, um, and then they subsequently changed it to high, medium, and low. Regardless of which system they were using, Kennebec County, which we are, we are a part of, was in the medium or yellow, um, category, which meant that we no longer had to, had to, or could choose not to mask, um, anymore. And I know subsequently, people got, you know, some calls and such, and as we've always operated here in, in, in Winthrop, that the school committee has made that determination about where we stand, and we've always, um, systematically followed the guidance of the main CDC, which now today, and I was hoping this was gonna come out earlier, but, um, that's what they're announcing today, is that they are saying on March 9th, we can go, um, to mask optional. And, uh, so, and it talks in here, just for the record, that Dr. Shaw had shared this with superintendents in the last previous meetings, once with us as a group of superintendents, and once meeting with the nine area superintendent presidents, that, um, the positivity rate was no longer going to be the deciding, biggest deciding factor with COVID cases and masking protocol, but was gonna be more based upon, um, hospitalizations and sort of the, how, what kind of response people are having to getting COVID. So, so, um, they, uh, this is the guidance we were expecting. We were told we're gonna get something the week after vacation. Up until this afternoon, I had written a whole different thing to share tonight, just based upon Governor Mills's, um, statements, and, uh, now we have what I would call a definitive guidance from, um, the DHHS and DOE. So, I will end my comments there.
So, um, one of our commitments was that we would follow whatever the main CDC said as far as COVID protocol was concerned. So this document, I don't know if you've had a chance to actually review it or not, says that masking is optional, and on the back, the second to last paragraph says that if, um, if the main CDC detects a concerning increase in the virus that would pose a risk to the state's hospital capacity, or if a new variant poses a new and previously unforeseen risk to the health of main people, then it may decide to offer new recommendations. So one of the things that we need to decide is, are we going to continue with our commitment that we've had in the past that says that we are going to follow what the main CDC says, or do we want to do something different? So that's one of the things we need to discuss today. Another thing we need to discuss is, uh, now thinking about, as Jim said, it used to be red, yellow, green, low, moderate, high. One of the concerns that I was thinking about was, how do we message to parents that while we've been yellow or moderate all this time, starting tomorrow, we're red or high, and everybody needs to wear masks? How do we message that to our families? And that was kind of keeping me awake at night a little bit. With this new recommendation from the main CDC, they're saying, if we find out that there is a bigger issue, then we will issue new recommendation. So, um, I think one of the questions that we should probably talk about today is, do we want to, um, have to have a state, a school board meeting to say, we're going to follow whatever directions the CDC says regarding masking? Or are we going to say, Jim, as the superintendent, if the main CDC offers new guidance about masking, we want you to just start it? So that's something that I think that we should be discussing. I know from significant amount of emails that I received, and I don't know how many all of you may have received, um, parents have been, and community members have been really, passionately concerned about masking as it pertains to emotional and developmental health of children, especially in the elementary level. I also know that there are gonna be some families that, um, are not gonna feel comfortable going without a mask. So, um, whatever guidance we give to Jim to, um, work with his administrative team on, those are kind of things that we need to keep in mind. So, do any of you have any thoughts or comments? Yeah, please.
I think that we have been following the CDC, and this is another recommendation, I'm fully in favor of this recommendation, waiting until the ninth. My district teaching is recommended today, we're going to the ninth. We got the polls here, we just got today from the students, the polls from the teachers, highly, percentage-wise, want to go optional. So, as far as that piece, I'm definitely in favor of optional. As far as the color code, I gotta think.
Well, there is no color coding anymore.
No, I'm not, but the, uh, what we're gonna do, yeah.
The messaging, yeah, and, and direction.
Think we can hold a meeting right off the fly? That'd be hard.
How much time, lead time, do we need to give to hold a meeting to discuss things?
You can do an emergency meeting in less than 24 hours.
I mean, could we, I mean, are we able to just get here?
We would need to have at least three members, right?
You'd have to have three.
But if the, if the CDC came out, like, on Wednesday, like, at this time right now, they said, we're changing tomorrow, do we just, will we continue no masks tomorrow? Hold a meeting that late, or how do we do that?
Well, that's one of the questions, right? Do we hold a meeting, or do we say, Jim, we're going to empower you, use your best judgment, and follow what the CDC says as far as masking is concerned?
I guess I think that that would be the best, uh, yeah, I mean.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, for me personally, I, I think there's a couple of things that I think it's important to get out there for people to understand. This past week, you know, I keep track of the positivity range, which are no longer being, used solely. This past week in, in Winthrop, we had over 100 new cases. That's more than double the number that it's ever been. But I'm, but I'm less concerned about that than I've ever been because of the way that Dr. Shaw is, is looking at this. One of the things that's been a little tiny bit frustrating for me is, is the emails I've been getting over the last couple of weeks, particularly some of our, um, area schools have made the decision to go into mask optional, um, getting ahead of the CDC, but people were using statistics from, well, one person talked about what they're doing in California, another person talked about what they're doing in Tennessee. And the reality is, we're not, we're not California or Tennessee, but I, I have a lot of confidence from listening to Dr. Shaw and listening to other members of the CDC, that they understand that that trend is, is coming this way. And so I think there is, I think the reason they're pulling, they're saying now to, uh, go to this recommendation is because they believe that the numbers, and they already said it, that could be the last part of this, but they already said in this letter that the hospitalizations are less, particularly in the three counties that were yellow. This, this, this applies to everybody, the entire state. But even if they hadn't done this, we were already in a yellow situation, and we could've made the same decision. And, uh, let me read this last part. "Main also has one of the lowest COVID-19 death rates in the nation, despite being one of the oldest states, uh, in the nation. Since the Omicron surge in mid-January, hospitalization levels of COVID in wastewater, other indicators of the prevalence of the virus have sharply declined and remain stable." So I think, I really read that to say that there is, there's a great deal of faith, from an epidemiological standpoint, that this is really where we expected it to be, that the trend is, is towards, um, things getting better, um, and the, uh, you know, that the like movement of this going back to, um, from medium level to, to high level over the next month or two is pretty low. So, I'm kind of okay with that, I don't think, uh, you know, we meet every two weeks, so if we have to call an emergency meeting, it's, I'm not opposed to doing that, I'm fine. And it's good that, that there's a lot of people to hear this, that, you know, if you want, if you want to do that, give me that authority, I'm totally fine with that, because it's, you can say it's, it's my authority to do that, but I'm gonna tell you that whatever the CDC says is what I'm going to do. I'm not a doctor, um, and I'm going to take, uh, you know, I'm gonna take the advice of the people that are trained to do this type of thing. And it's been frustrating to listen to some people, you know, people who are not doctors, and even people who are nurses and doctors. people who are not doctors, and even people who are nurses and doctors, you know, make all, make kind of judgments about our decisions that we've made. I'd like to believe that, you know, they talk about the teachers and where they're at. And for the most part, people here in Winthrop have been so incredibly supportive of the teachers and the staff and, and the decisions that we've made. People have been very patient. But they, it's sort of this sense of, well, we're not, we don't like what the CDC is saying right now, so other schools are jumping ship, we should jump ship too. And I'm just sorry, I, I, actually, I'm not sorry. I'm not going to apologize for the fact that I think we need to follow the guidance of the people who are, who are trained to do this. I think anybody who thinks that this is, I'm a little frustrated with the people who talk about this is a political this or a political that. This is not a political anything. This is a public health issue, plain and simple. I hate wearing a mask as much as anybody else. And if you read the information that put out, or happen to see this week's newspaper, which is going to be old news by the time it gets published in the advertiser, I would, I would dare say that if it's not 100% of the people who want to get rid of masks, it's pretty darn close to them. So, we're all anxious, we've been anxious since the day we first put these masks on to take them off. I'm all for it. And I think, I was getting a little frustrated with the fact that we've done this now for a long time. If we have to wait one more week to take them off, I think that's the right, we're 100% behind it.
Joe?
I had a question.
Yes.
I did not see anything in here about the federal rule regarding wearing masks on the school buses.
No, that's been waived. I didn't, you're right, I didn't see it in there either, but the.
It was in the other one.
It was, I initially thought, just from, I'm glad you brought that up, Joe. I initially thought after, after hearing the superintendent's talk and the, the report back from our president about what Dr. Shaw was saying, I really thought this was going to be March 18th. Because initially, the deadline on the federal, the sundowning on the federal bus guidelines was March 18th, but it's been waived. So, but as soon as schools waive it, they don't have to mask on buses anymore either.
Well, I think that's an important clarification for everyone. I will support going and following the guidelines as we talked about, that a mask 9 will be effective. And at the same time, we will fear superintendent power, there is a change necessary to make that change and notify people.
Well, I was not part of the world when we talked about following the CDC guidelines. So, I have, I feel like I might have just a different perspective because I was a part of that organic process of getting to that space and being new. So, I, I think, I absolutely want to follow the CDC guidelines. And I think the guidelines are made for the state of Maine and maybe at the county level. And I feel like our responsibility is to consider at the Winthrop level. So, this, we have full charge with figuring out what works best for our community. So, I sort of feel like the CDC is the baseline. I would never do anything less. I would never go against them, but I, you might layer something on top of it, which meets our needs more specifically, whatever they might be, so. So, in light of that, the couple of things I have questions about. So, totally agree, I'm not an epidemiologist either, but I am a teacher, so I'm thinking about how do we make these kind of structural changes in schools, so that is my place of activity. So, I think of like, okay, so change in schools, education in schools, the fact that it's a place of employment for teachers, it's a place that children have to be, that are required to be there. Those are things that to factor into decisions moving forward. The issue that we are dealing with children and there's peer pressure, and then how they make decisions, supporting families' decisions, making sure there's an environment in which choices are supported and respected, depending on where they go. And also bearing in mind that elementary school might have some issues that might be even a little different than high school. And so, trying to sort of see, and I don't know if that's the, where we talked about the procedure versus policy. And so, I'm just new at this, so people can just jump in when I get into the weeds with that. But there might be some call to a discussion around that piece. So, I sort of think about, we're charged, I think, with in-person instruction, right? That's our primary thing. So, we want to make sure the decisions we make support that. And so, while that, unmasking is something that would support instruction absolutely, just to consider that it's also increasing the risk that would, there would be less in-person instruction because it also could be some issues. So, balancing those concerns and thinking about the school calendar in that we just came back from a week away. And so, while the CDC could say the ninth, I don't know what their thoughts are behind that. But I think if we think that people went to Florida and did all sorts of things over break, maybe we could say as a school, you know what? Hang on, let's give that sort of breathing period to get, whoever gets sick can, you know, transmits. So, the ninth is the earliest day we can do that, but let's explore. Maybe it would be better to give time, like a whole week of classes, so people could see their teachers and talk about it, and give people time to process, and then that following Monday, which would actually be two weeks after spring break, to sort of talk through things. I don't know what the high school schedule is, but we would go see all of our teachers except for if you go through a whole. So, you would need a whole week to go through that.
This, it wasn't written in here, and I'm surprised because you make an outstanding point. But I've heard through the grapevine, so it's not the official word, that the reason they chose the ninth was so that schools could be back in session for an entire week after vacation. And we'll see if there's going to be a huge uptick or, or not, based upon exactly what you just said.
I mean, I just had three sit today.
Yeah.
So, so those, so that kind of piece.
But let me go add to that also, and then if Sue was going to bring this up or whatever, but Sue Pilot, we had two, we're going to continue poll test, at least for the, at least for now. And we had two positive polls at the middle school today, correct? So, you know, we're going to continue to look at that, and we're going to continue to, if you are positive, you do stay out. You know, those protocols are still in place. And we'll still follow those protocols in terms of dealing with the students who are, and staff who are positive.
So, my, sort of the three kind of things I talked about, I mean, I wrote it down, would be the vulnerable at risk teachers and students. And so, sits again as a place of employment, and students have, children have to be here. How do we address that? Like, is that something where if there's a teacher who is medically vulnerable, do the students need to wear masks in there? Is that, does the student has a measure of vulnerability to the rest of the class? I, I don't know the answer to that. I'm just saying that it's something that I think we need to speak about because I think that's, you know, inclusive caring. We want students to be there, and we, I think that's something to consider, just the at-risk populations that we might have.
I think, before you move on, one of the concerns I have about that is that you are then sharing somebody's private medical information with a whole classroom, or potentially with a schoolwork of people. And I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's the right answer.
I don't know whether it is or not, but I, you know, teachers who are medically vulnerable and, you know, if that could be some, I'm not, but I know them that are. So, that would be something really concerning if they, you know, that is something to really consider. And whether or not their medical history, yes, it's their choice, but I think giving them that choice too is a, yeah. So, the two sort of policy pieces are, what we've already talked about is the on-ramp and the off-ramp. And I am also very comfortable in an emergency situation, the CDC says, you know what, this is going out of control. I absolutely think, I'm very comfortable in having Jim just make that decision. Because there's a timeliness to that, that's what is going on. And then we'll need, of course, regularly, and if we see a pattern, we can address that. So, for the timeliness, I, to answer one of your questions, I think that's, I'm very comfortable with that. But sort of policies around the on-ramp and the off-ramp, I think for students and families, to be really clear about both of those pieces, because I think that's the way we're going to have success. Because it needs to be not a shock if things come out that we go back to wearing masks for a while and then come back. And what does that transition look like? And, you know, we need everybody on board with that because we want to focus on keeping students in school and in-person instruction. That's our priority. And if you have to wear masks to do that, that's a better choice than not being in schools. So, really to keep reiterating that. So, you know, what is the policy for on-ramp? I think the conversations that families and students have is really important. And they need time to have those conversations and to help students understand about changes. It's going to be sort of a big issue. And I think if you read the comments in, so, you know, as a math teacher, you know, graphics are, you know, pretty bold, but if you read the comments in here, they do not say everything is easy. You know, some of them say we wouldn't mind wearing it, they're uncomfortable. So, I mean, I think there are some real educational issues that we should discuss. And then, so the off-ramp, and I think that was it. And then, do we have pre-K involved with our elementary school? And they're not, they can't be vaccinated, they don't have a choice to be vaccinated.
Right.
Something to think about.
They have a different, whole different protocol as well.
So, those are sort of my pieces. And I don't, again, I think this might be more procedural. But for educators and for the situation of choosing not to wear masks, is it one of those things that teachers should wear masks, you know, for the first week to help normalize that it's okay still to wear one? It's not just everybody needs to take it off, and everybody can make their own decisions? And just, we're role models, you know? What we say and do, more than what we do, is really critical in helping students be comfortable in their situation.
So, one of the things that Joe mentioned there, but I probably should, for the record, put it out there, that the teachers also were polled, 70-plus percent said they wanted masks optional. 20% said no, and 10% said they didn't really, it didn't really matter, they'd do whatever. So, from my perspective, if 80% are saying they either, it doesn't really matter to them, or they prefer them off, I think that says a lot. And it's going to be, but I hope, we haven't really said this, but my hope is that people are reading this, and they're talking about having the mask optional. One of the things that's interesting, generally everything you're seeing is, you know, and my wife is an educator in another district, and she's like, I'm going to still continue to wear a mask, and it needs to be okay. For kids who want to wear their masks, it needs to be okay. For teachers who want to wear their masks, that needs to be okay. I think we, for some people, it'll be a while. I still, when I go to the stores, which it's been okay now to not wear them, I still wear them. And then we need to figure, we need to figure out how to make sure that's okay too.
I think that, for me, was my biggest charge to you is how will you and your administrative team message that to students? That those individuals, staff members or students who choose to continue to wear masks not be ostracized by people who choose not to wear masks? And how will we message that to the families as well? Because I think, you know, there's only so much that can come from the school. At some point, that same messaging needs to be echoed at home, right? That this is a choice that's being made. And sometimes the choice belongs to the individual student or, or staff member, and sometimes it's a family choice, and the student is just going along with whatever the family has decided. So, yeah, here.
That topic did come up more than.
More than a couple times?
More than a couple times. In the responses to the survey, just concerned about there being a divide between students who decide to mask and those who say not to, and concern that teachers may be like, oh, well, you don't have to wear a mask. I'm like, oh, but I choose to, like, wink, wink. And I, I don't think personally that that would happen. I've talked, I talked to a lot of students in person about it, and none of them could foresee a divide happening, but.
I think it needs to be addressed, I don't think it should be assumed.
I, I agree. I, I'm very concerned that I do not really want to hear about anybody being bullied and put down because they're wearing a mask or not wearing a mask. This is a great choice, okay, but they're being given, it's a great permission they're being given. Easily be taken away too. I mean, that's the whole thing, is that this is a safety issue, making people comfortable. And I hope that message, and I hope all the teachers and administrators all cooperate in getting that message out.
What does the law say, the school law, regarding sharing somebody's medical history with the student body and the schools? My thought is that that's not okay.
That is, you're definitely right. First of all, it is a FERPA violation, not a HIPAA violation. I know a lot of times, particularly people who are involved in the medical profession always say, well, it's a HIPAA violation. Schools do not get involved in HIPAA, get involved in FERPA. Very similar, but that's probably unnecessary to even say that. But no, there's no way in the world that is permissible for us to, to provide information about individuals.
If a, an individual teacher decides to have a conversation with their students and say, I am at a high risk for serious complications to COVID-19, and I will continue to wear a mask, and I want you two in this classroom as well, how will that be handled?
I think, we'll have to talk about that more as administrative team. I, I think, no, not that I think. If we decide, and it certainly seems that's where we're headed, to say they're mask optional, then it has to be mask optional. We can't say, we have, you know, I don't know. I don't know who's considered medically fragile or whatever. I mean, I probably am medically fragile as anybody. But I, that just, that can't be accepted, we can't say. I, I have no issue, I could, if I were teaching, I don't mind saying, because it's me, but I'm not sure other people would say, you know, I would, I could see somebody saying something like, hey, when we meet together in a group, especially if they're about the little, you know, the little guys, they get together for their morning meeting, and they're basically sitting on top of each other, say, you know, I'm going to wear my mask, feel free to wear yours. There's a difference between feel free and be happy, which is kind of what's.
And then I say, and what about those people that are medically adverse? And this is their work, or this, these are children who have this in their school.
Yep, so I think we have to figure out how to deal with those. But I, I think we're really challenged as a school committee. I don't personally identify who they are right now. And I think we don't want to get into the weeds with that as a school committee. But some administratively, we deal with those people.
I think that that's part of what this few-day runtime between now and the ninth is, is for Jim and the A-team to figure out how to deal with that kind of stuff as well as the messaging.
And I would propose that, I think, that's not a lot of time to deal with that with the school and with the families. So, I would propose that it would be on the, what is that, the 14th? We can start on that, Monday, the 14th. And I also, this is the, I think, the tenor of the school and following the CDC. So, that's why I would say that.
Okay. Does anybody else here on the school committee have any comments or concerns before we open this up to public comment for this section? No, okay. Mike, is there anybody on the Zoom that has questions or comments?
No.
Okay. If you're on the Zoom and you would like to ask a question or make a comment, please put in the comment section that you would like to speak, and Mike will let us know. Anybody here present who has any comments that you'd like to share with us before we move on from this topic? Yes, please stand up and give us your first and last name.
Hi, my name is Alicia Lawson. I have five kids. I had the privilege of having a child in each of our schools here. And I thank you for sticking with the CDC guidelines. I think if you commit to something at the outset of the pandemic, it's really important to have that follow-through. So, I appreciate that. I also like what you said about masking, giving children the option to make that choice, and especially making hips so it's a safe choice, so that they're not bullied. And I hope that we can also extend that same grace to children who also choose not to participate in vaccines or pool testing, so they're not bullied as well. I do have a question. I have a child, and I've recently learned, and I was actually encouraged to come and share this with you guys today, that she won't be able to participate in after-school activities like track and whatnot. She did do some sports in the fall with running, and we just learned because of her choices that she, she made, that she won't be able to participate in those. And that is a result of not being in pool testing. And I'm, and I'm just wondering, because I haven't ever gotten any straight answers as far as, I'm confused, I guess I'm confused because I know that we don't have to quarantine right now if, if, what? So, we don't have, we don't have to quarantine unless you're symptomatic, is that correct? Is that how the new policy is going?
Actually, unless you are testing positive. Actually, unless you are testing positive.
So that is the only excuse, the, the one thing that would prevent you if you weren't, okay. So yeah, I, I guess I'm just wondering, you know, where she was able to do that in the fall, what's the difference now? And now we have Omicron, so that's a less severe length strain, you know, she's literally a cross country. What, what changed, you know, from then to now?
So I, I think we can clarify this with the board, but it wasn't my understanding that, and unfortunately Joel has it in Houston, but once we got outside, the pool, the pool testing requirement no longer exists.
So, yeah, I can clarify that a little bit further. In October, September, October, we made rules for winter activities, which were by and large indoor activities where there was no serious air exchange. When we move into spring sports, we'll be looking at that again and saying, you know, asking, do we feel the same way we did with winter that that's how we want to continue? Or do we want to go back to how we handle things for the fall?
Okay. So if track signups are coming up, would the children then, I mean, are we looking at doing that transition or?
I would say stay tuned for another two weeks maybe?
Okay.
And we should have a better answer for you then?
Okay.
Yes?
Would the new policy for spring sports also change indoor activities? Because stuff like drama club and art club run all year inside?
It's a good question. I think that's something that we'll discuss when we, when we discuss that as a whole instead of.
It does, does change this. You no longer have to be masked. I know you, oh, you both do one X-ray.
No.
I do not.
So no, you no longer have to do that as of March nine.
Unless we choose a different date tonight?
Right.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the public? Just a second. Go ahead, stand up and give your names first and last, please.
Sarah Lincoln. And I just had a few things to say. Yeah, is it loud enough?
No worries.
I don't know everyone's name up there, but there was a point where, as comments made with questions, you don't have the answers for them. And I guess my one comment would be too, why would you have to do next week that? If you always answer for questions unanswered? I, I don't, I understand like some schools are starting it now and I was like, okay, we'll see how things go after break. Well, after break, and we've seen in every spring break or any break that has a take after Christmas. Look at what happened in January. Everyone was sick. I just moved back from Virginia. I, man has great, you're very, everyone's vaccinated. You guys are one of the best states. But you, since I've been back, I've noticed that you guys are way, way more, much more lenient with the mask wearing. And I've seen so many more people, children, adults, get COVID. They're vaccinated, most of them, thank God. But I didn't see as much where I was, where I came from. And there's a larger population in where I'm from, where I was living in Richmond, Virginia. So that, I, I just have some concern. And Sarah, you also had spoken that you, the public, you've seen a hundred kids get COVID. It's gone up, doubled recently.
Okay.
Or was it kids or?
Entire town.
Entire town. Okay. So now entire town, which we also seen too, a lot of people are asymptomatic. A kid, if they have no symptoms, you're not going to think to test them unless someone in their house tests positive. So that child, if everyone starts to unmask and there's some children with medical issues and there's a teacher with medical issues that, but they can't tell their students in their classroom that they need mask worn to protect themselves at their place of employment. I find a problem with that. I would be very upset as a teacher. Medical issues, it's like place of employment. You're going to tell me I have to go to classroom and I have diseases all around me and I'm the only one that has to wear a mask? I don't even know if that's legal. I don't know, I don't know all the legalities. So I apologize. To me though, I'd be very frustrated. And also we're looking at kids' emotional response to all these things. Right now, CDC is like, okay, wear yellow. So anyone's, whatever they want to do. Well, what if two weeks from now it's red? And all of a sudden, these kids are up and down again, all roller coaster. Isn't that the whole issue that's been going on? Nothing is a straight answer for them. I think also the, you had women in the blue suggested have an education in a classroom. Well, you can also maybe do something where the school and community gets involved. Have more, have like even current events in the classroom, like just about masks. Give education out because kids had to go wear them and they had no answer. They were just told, you're going home now. They didn't understand. And so now it's not being talked about because now we're just trying to survive and get these things off. But in there are, a lot of studies done and I agree, maybe the mask isn't always the answer. But from my own experience, I'm vaccinated, boosted, and I wear the mask quite frequently in public and around places. Or people that say, I'm, I hope that you please wear your mask, I'll wear it. Why? Who am I to judge and say, no, I have a right, so I could kill you, but I have a right to not wear a mask? I, I don't find how that can save my community. It's just killing off the community. And so I apologize.
So you made a point that I need to address with you. One of the things that you asked was why we need to wait two weeks before we make a decision about spring sports? No one on this committee is prepared to make that decision tonight because we haven't had any discussions about it yet. It would be, you're responsible of us to make that decision without doing any research at all. We are, as a board, pretty conservative in our decision-making about when we make changes to the way we do things in our schools. No one on this board is a medical professional and we rely heavily on medical professionals to help us make those kinds of decisions. Unlike an individual family who is making decisions for their family, we are making decisions for hundreds of families. And not every family handles their, their interactions in the public the same. It is important to us that we be more conservative than liberal when it comes to how we handle this kind of stuff. If it were a really small school of fifty kids or something like that, it'd be a lot easier to, to make different decisions than we're making here for the public schools. So I, I appreciate everything that you just brought up and I, I understand what you're saying and what Ms. Emery is saying about, you know, teachers and students being in a, in a smallish environment, right? A classroom is a pretty small place. And is it safe to be without a mask or is it not? I think one of the things that is important when we message this to the community is that this is mask optional, not no masks, right? For the first little while, I think you'll probably see a lot of families tentatively say, if you feel comfortable, go ahead and take your mask off. You'll definitely see families that say, no masks, it's optional. We're not sending you to school with one. We're not going to deal with it. And I think that we have to respect both of those approaches to the situation. Teachers are in a really unique place as are medical professionals as far as needing to be in a place where you're surrounded by a number of people that other, other, you know, employees of different companies or may not have to have that happen. For instance, I work from home. I only see my husband and my son all week long. That's it. Unless I go to the grocery store. So I'm not in the same situation that somebody who works outside of the home is. So I think that that's a unique thing to school employees. And I could see that being very scary for some of our school employees. And that is something that we're going to have to have the A-Team work on, is how do we approach that? Catherine, you bring up a good point. Do we take a second full week to allow the A-Team enough time to make that decision? Or does the A-Team feel like they have enough time between now and Monday to make that decision? So technically, oh, it's two business days, right?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Thank you.
Right. And don't forget the process would be the A-Team discussing and then the D-Team discussing the teachers and then teachers discussing the children. And then children going to talk to their parents and parents talking to their children. Like it is a, it's a, it's not a, I, I think, yeah, it's a longer process. And I think we want to give it all the time. We want, because we want to be successful. We want this to be someplace successful so that we can have that flexibility for those that are.
Melissa.
I love this conversation. Yeah, I'm listening. All right. So I'm Melissa Brewer, the school nurse that went from grade school. I've come for, been on Zoom every meeting probably since 2020. I don't know, every meeting. So just a side note, the school nurses, the state of Maine school nurses meet every Wednesday since this all started with Emily Poland from the DOE. Also, there's all, there's always a CDC person present via Zoom. Today was a pretty heated conversation because everything is so new after vacation. Lots of changes, lots of unknowns. So for those that don't know, when we have a positive case, we follow an SOP standard of practice. It's somewhat black and white. There's some gray in there, but it's pretty, pretty user-friendly when you read it. That SOP is not up to date yet. That will change on March ninth or after. So when you say March fourteenth or whatever, that might give us a little more time. Me, Jeannie, A-Team, Jim, you guys, like to kind of figure out if there is, it's supposed to align with the optional masking. Because right now it stands universal masking. Because that's mostly, most of the schools in the state of Maine have been until recently, right? So I just want to make that clear that we did meet today from, it went on after four. What I heard, and Jeannie is not here today, but she's texting me. I want to make sure the community is aware of the changes if and when we adopt optional masking. So I'm trying to think, the quarantine. So as of right now, universal masking, there's really no quarantine, right? Because they're universal masks. So if you're living in a household with a positive, you can keep coming to school no matter what because you're, we're all universally masked. That will change. That student, if they're not pool testing, if they're not vaccinated or boosted, but wherever they stand, five to eleven, if they're vaccinated, they qualify. Or if, and/or if you've had COVID in the last nine, ninety days, you will have to quarantine. That was a, that was told to us today by Emily Poland and Bethany. I, I, we will get the updated information tomorrow, but that is, we were all blown away and kind of shocked with this whole quarantine. And also Jeannie wanted to make, know if there's extracurricular activities and non-pool testers, they may need to quarantine if they are in a, if we know of a positive case. I asked a question regarding, because that's what we heard, Jeannie and I and all the school nurses heard today, that quarantine would happen if we know of information. I'm not saying in a classroom, if I know of a positive case, like a pool testing today, tomorrow, tested positive, that classroom does not need to quarantine. It's household positives outside of school. Because we still have to follow the CDC guidelines of isolation and quarantine. On a positive COVID case, kiddo, so a kiddo is positive, we send them home or symptomatic, what have you, or they're home and they tested positive. We, we know this from the start, five days they're out, right? They're five days, fully five days of isolation. Day six to ten, we've been doing testing out, right? Testing back into coming back to school. Again, they're masking when they come back. They will have to mask when they come back, if they're coming back, whether they're negative or positive. Between the day six and ten, they will have to mask the full ten days. So you're having students that could potentially, two weeks ago, unmask for a week or so, test positive and they will have to come back to school. And the teachers are going to have to keep track of making sure they have a mask on and they're allowed to take it off obviously while they're eating. And in the SOP, how it stands, I mean, I can read it to you guys, to you if you want, or we can share it. But it basically says just having to make sure they're distanced. It doesn't say six feet, doesn't say ten feet or anything like that, but making sure those COVID-positive kiddos in those whole ten days need to mask. So I just want to be clear with that piece. I think the testing thing has worked. When you're in the moment, having to test out or back into school, it's like, really? Day eight, I'm still positive? But it is working. So they'll wear universally masks. So I just want to make sure I've said everything.
And it sounds like we need to get some clarification on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not, that is, a lot of what you said is what we're hearing too, but that is not mainly, it was two weeks ago that the CDC uncoupled the contact tracing with, whatever. That was, that was a big, that was a big, that's why a lot of the school systems, they got ahead of the CDC, made the decision to get ahead because that, what they call uncoupling. So that doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, it makes no sense to us either, but because we're like, we're getting contacted trace for, since January. We have not contact traced, right? Like we're sending letters notifying families of a positive student or students or staff. But really, but if we know of a situation and we know they're positive or parent calls me or something and says, hey, I'm positive, if they're not pool tested, if they're not vaccinated, or they haven't had COVID in the last ninety days, they need to go home.
If they're positive?
The parent or sibling. So hypothetically, Jeannie calls me from the middle school and says, hey, I have an older sibling here tested positive. Has your, is your student vaccinated? No. Are they pool testing? Yes. Then they can stay. If they're not pool tested, they're not vaccinated, they need to go home. Per the recommendations that we were told today at the meeting. And I just want this to, and, and maybe we've heard it wrong, but I, I want the community to know this. This, we're not making this up, like, you know, I haven't made up any of this stuff. It's just, I want to make sure it's clear to the community to back us up. Because that's what we've watched. We've followed SOP, so.
Is that something you can try to clear back tomorrow possibly?
We meet, we will meet tomorrow. Our, our regional superintendent's group meets tomorrow. We, I'm sure that'll be a topic. But that makes zero sense. And I'm not doubting Melissa because she's been a good source of information. But that, that is very contradictory to what we've been hearing from the, from the CDC federal and state and Governor Mills for the last two plus weeks.
This is part of the answer to your question about why do we wait for our next meeting?
No, I, I like to say, well, you guys, no, I'll tell me. Because I was like, wondering why we're going to go to class tonight to make our statements and.
Oh, I was interested. You have some questions?
Yeah, I just got a question from Melissa. And Melissa, is in your, the policy that you're just saying, is it then appropriate for a child, if, if say a relative, someone in the household is positive, that then they could mask and go back to school? Or is that not in the policy? Do you know?
Right now, the CDC, because. So the new one has not come out yet, but we, what we're being told is, because we asked that question, can't they just mask or just start participating in pool testing? And the answer was no. So, you know, and we did, we asked all these questions because obviously we're a small area, but every, there were two hundred school nurses and, and people on this Zoom asking these hard questions. And there are a lot of unknown answers to, and they're like, oh, we'll get back to you. So usually we get a follow-up email tomorrow with these and I will, will forward along to Jim and the A-Team because there's still this, a lot of unknowns of the new. And, but I just think that lifting the mask, there potentially may be some backpedaling. And I don't like to use that word, but it seems a little back. Yeah, a step back. And then I did want to ask, you know, you did say teachers and nurses, but symptomatic students, if they're not masked or masked, either way, I think Jeannie and I would think in our, in our language, if you're sending, if a teacher is sending or anyone's sending a student to us that's symptomatic, we will ask for that child to wear a mask when we place them, to assess them and things like that. That's just something that we feel strongly about, trying to keep us, us healthy as well. So I think, you know, the optional masking is, we're going there. You know, I feel like we're getting there, but I think there's a standard a little bit.
Your name? My name is Heidi Presti. I have been helping with some of the grade school pool testing. One of the things we had kind of chatted about the other day is, you know, again, all this information is coming out. We know it's being thrown at you and there's like different avenues that are still kind of being pieced together. One of the things that Melissa had mentioned that being one person other than when Josie helps also and I'm there for pool testing days, but that's not her every day, that just getting kind of the permission to rapid test a kid. She's on the phone sometimes for hours trying to get ahold of parents. They're working, you know what I mean? That's not easy. She had mentioned like at the beginning of the school year, when we send out that general consent that says, do I have your permission as a school nurse to give your child Tylenol, Ibuprofen, Benadryl? Call nine one one in an emergency? That one of the things that would be very. That one of the things that would be very helpful for the time it takes when she may have three kids in isolation, like last week, one puking, she's trying to make phone calls, she's trying to answer the messages, is could there be something that was sent out as a general consent to say, do I have your permission to rapid test your kid? For her, that would save her, hands down, hours a day, which seems ridiculous, but that's the reality of what Melissa's going through. Um, secondary to that, once, I think you said, March ninth, the SOP will have a better guideline too? Is that, I'm a, I, I'm also a nurse working, healthcare algorithms for me are my thing, I like them, they make life easy. Um, if that would be something that once we got some real definitive, um, guidelines in place, that we could then forward to all the families of the community. So they have an algorithm, the teachers have an algorithm, Melissa can refer to her algorithm that simply says, positive mom at home, you're vaccinated, you're pool testing, yes, no, you just follow it. Can I come to school with a mask? Yes, no, can I, do I have to quarantine? Yes, no. It gives everybody that quick reference that kind of just makes sure, again, that our community understands that it doesn't just stop at, do we mask, do we not? There's, there's a lot of other layers below it that we need to make sure people are on the same page about, so that people aren't angry when they get a call from the nurse saying, I'm sorry, your child has to come home today. What do you mean? Two weeks ago, we didn't have to do that. You're absolutely right. Two weeks ago, we didn't. But because we're not universally masking anymore, we're at a different risk and we're a different category. In that, you could also, like, just remind people, if we became reg with hospital admissions, these are the things that would then take place too. Also a quick reminder for them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Is there anybody that has comments?
No.
No?
Yes.
Yes. Mike is saying yes.
Chiana was going to comment, and Evan Jones.
Okay, hold on, Tim has one thing to say, and then we'll go to the Zoom.
Ask the, um, all the administrators, how long do they think they need to get all this policy stuff up again?
Good question. How long do you think you need to create this policy and share it with your staff?
I guess I really, I mean, based upon what I just heard over there, I mean, I guess I want to get more information from the state as to what the SOP is going to say. Um, because if unmasking is going to open up the Pandora's box back to where we have to do all this contact tracing, you know, and I, I, I never heard any of that, but I'm not saying it's not true. Um, but, you know, I guess I don't have enough information to even begin to figure out how to put anything in place to communicate. The only thing I know for sure is that March ninth, if these are universal, I mean, can come off, right?
Maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah. Are you looking at me, Kevin?
I'm looking at you.
Um, something I hadn't, which I'm kind of embarrassed to say, I didn't even think about it. But when you mentioned how, um, kids are going to make a choice to mask or not mask, or family is going to make a choice to mask or not mask. So some of the footwork I thought of as you were speaking is, I'm going to have to check with all parents and see whether their child needs to mask or not mask. Um, and then that becomes a situation of us policing that also. Because kids are not going to have a choice at my age group, right? I mean, a lot of them, some of them might, but a lot of them, it's going to be a family decision. So I need to know from the family whether their children are masking or not masking, and then we have to keep track of that. So that's going to take me some time. Um, it's not going to be just that we can make this decision and, and not know what families want. So I don't know, that just, I hadn't really thought about that. Because we can't have all these, um, grade school kids coming to school and saying, no, I don't need to wear this, when maybe mom, dad, stepdad, stepmom, whoever, decided that as a family, yes, you are going to wear that mask and you need to have it on. So that threw a little bit of a, something more for me to think about at the grade school level.
Yeah.
And I think when you said about sending home, you know, clarification about, you know, if this is a situation, here's what happens. If this is a situation, I think that would be so helpful for us. I mean, I, I'm just speaking about grade school, and I think it would be helpful for all of us. But I really like that idea for, um, for parents, so that parents are aware of what happens. And I'm not saying every, every scenario can be on that, but if it could be, you know, pretty well thought out and, um, put together, I think that would be great information to go home along with, um, will your child, you know, what, what will, what would, what would your child be doing when we return, if, whenever the time is that we do optional masking?
Okay. That is, that is a lot.
Yeah.
Sue?
I, oh, well, I feel like, you know, and it's been said, a lot of people just thought, oh, Governor Mills says it's, you know, it's no longer a requirement. Well, off they come, and it, it's so much more complicated than that. There are so many more moving parts, and we need that if-this, then-that stuff that we had not considered because we're so now used to following the procedures and protocols that we've been following. Um, and if people might say, you can turn and just revert, it's, it's not that way. It's not black and white. There's so much, so much gray in here now, especially since we don't have clear guidance from, um, the nurses, that aspect of it. We, I mean, there's a lot more clarity that we need, and even I, I, I think a lot of people just thought, oh, here's the deadline and off they come. And it's just, it can't be that way. I know it's, it's frustrating for so many people, but it's, I, I hope when people are listening that they, they come to understand that it's a lot more involved than just a deadline.
Thank you, thank you all. Uh, Jenna?
Good evening. Uh, we went mask free as of Monday, and, um, first of all, it felt like a whole brand of school year, seeing all the kids' faces. Uh, but this was kind of in response to Joe's, uh, concern about bullying, because we certainly have a lot of staff members and students who are still masking all day long, and nobody says a word to them. Um, I think the ones that are unmasked are happy to be unmasked, um, and the ones that are, they don't, you know, necessarily care if others are masked. That's in the middle school. Um, I have heard from some of the lower grades, not that there's any bullying or anyone saying anything, but some of the, um, kindergarten kids, um, were a little afraid to take their masks off because that's all they'd ever known. So I can appreciate the fact of teachers being able to possibly have conversations with their students or parents, with their children, um, and things like that and that. And they were also very confused with, you know, are these kids supposed to be masking? Um, you know, we just, in middle school, assume that kids are following what their parents are saying. Um, or if parents really want their student to mask, then they will let us know, um, that they want to make sure that their kid's wearing a mask all day. We monitor that anyways. Um, so it's not anything new, having to monitor kids who mask or not mask. Um, although it could get a little confusing if you've got, you know, Johnny who has to mask all day, and Suzie who doesn't, and, you know, so on and so forth. But, um, so far so good for, for, um, Windsor.
Okay, thank you. Um. What?
Who's the other person?
Uh, who was the other person on today?
No longer with us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Sorry, really, really quick. Because one way to come, just tell them for one second, because Fred brought up about teachers and the masking. And Melissa, the school nurse, made the comment, if someone is symptomatic or comes to them, she's going to re-require that they wear a mask. So I guess to put devil's advocate, why, and I respect that one hundred percent. Why is it okay for the nurse to request that, but a teacher in a classroom who has medical conditions and needs to wear a mask and should have people around her wearing masks? How, and that's her employment. How is it okay for one employee in the school system to have that be okay? And the other one who's all day long with his kids? I'm not saying that you're not only a kid, and, and actually more than one kid, she has more than one kid too. But up to, oh, but out of the school, there's like twenty to thirty kids. It's probably smaller because we have a large, I don't know exact numbers. But I guess it's, I don't know, I just, I, I, a teacher, as an employee for the school system, and I grew up with parents and employees for school systems in town and outside of the room. And I, I don't know, I have a respect for them. It's a teacher, and you guys already have, teaching's hard enough, right now you guys are struggling finding substitutes and et cetera. If you're a teacher that literally cannot work if she can't have people around her mask, you lose another teacher. You're, that already in a, another, you're adding more employees you could be losing possibly. If you're telling them, well, sorry, everyone has an option to come into your classroom, you can't require it. They might leave, they have to leave. I, I lost doctors because they could not work in areas possibly because of their health issues. They'd leave, like, being a dentist for their career because of their health. So I guess I'm just bringing that part into it to think about as well, the teachers and the students.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, what Melissa was, um, asking us for, um, is that if a teacher sends a symptomatic student to her, so somebody who is showing symptoms of COVID nineteen to her small space, which is significantly smaller than a classroom, that while she's determining whether they're COVID positive or not, that they wear a mask. Uh, I personally, and I'm not the only person that would make this decision, I think that's a realistic request, right? Um, she's not asking kids who have, um, a bloody nose to wear a mask. She's specifically asking, can kids who are showing symptoms, until we have the test results that says that they're not positive, wear a mask in the small space less than six feet?
So the teacher can't ask out of a classroom, because she has medical condition? I'm, I'm just asking in case there is a teacher that's got a pressure too. I guess I would try to be like, why, and I understand why Melissa wants to, but why, because other teachers, their own comfort, it happens a lot. But also you went back to the burka.
Burka.
So I'm just, I'm just thinking that, that could be to help or provide, it's not, and we want to talk about teacher, but would you ever make this advice to?
I do, I, I think it is something to really consider, that, that if there's a situation, I think people care about one another. I don't think, I think some of them said, listen, my child, if a child or an adult in a community said that they had a condition and they clearly like it if people wore masks, I think that is something to consider, saying that that's an okay request. Is that like, is that what we're talking about? Freedom at the CDC, but if somebody has that situation, wouldn't we want to be a community that says that we all work together? I mean, I sort of feel like, in general, that is sort of the idea, right? People, if, if they have a condition in school, we can give accommodations for them? Like, is, is this part of that whole piece? That if it's somebody's place of employment, or a student has to be there because that's their school, wouldn't we want to make sure that they can be there in the best possible way? And, and what's the trade-off of these other people wanting not to wear a mask versus a health consideration for another person? I think that is something that it should be considered.
I, um, don't disagree with your, your thought about community. However, when we make, um, accommodations for children for, um, physical or learning limitations, we do that as silently as possible, with as little ripple to the rest of the classroom as we can, and without sharing that information as much as.
Yeah, but I don't know why, I, I, I don't know why it would be sharing the conversation. If somebody just asked that, that's not sharing the medical condition, we all need to share it. You just say, again, this isn't my situation, but I know of teachers and, and students that have the situation. So, um, I don't think you just say, you know, and like, and to be understanding about that. You're not thinking of going to share your medical history with anybody, but you just say, you know, this is a situation, you know, I'd really like to wear masks in class.
So this is a situation, I have a medical condition, and I want you to, so yeah, you are sharing that information with a significant number of people. Especially if you're talking about the high school where you have, or junior high, where you have moving classrooms.
Right.
Where people say, oh, I'm in so-and-so's class, I don't have to wear a mask. I'm in so-and-so's class, I have to wear a mask. But that's going to be difficult. That's something that the A-Team is going to have to think about. That's not something that we will tell you what to do. That's hard. That's a really hard line that we have to learn as part of this.
Yeah, I understand that. I'll just say one more time, like, I don't think, A, that students are completely flexible with rules in one classroom with another classroom. That's not an issue on the burden of psychology of, oh, yeah, so-and-so I have to wear a mask in this room. That's not, you need to do different things in different classrooms, some people want you to do this or not. That's not an issue. Um, I think the, uh, idea that if someone chooses to say that, that's not being required to say their medical condition, but if they feel strongly enough about it, that they are worried about it, and they say, hey, guys, could you do that? That's their choice, you're not making them share their medical, they're just, their personal comfort and their physical safety, they feel like this is really important, they want them to do that. That's, you're not requiring them to do that, you know, breaking purpose, or they choose to say, in my life, I feel I would be putting myself at a medical, physical danger if I don't do this, and they ask you to do this, we want to be a school in which they say, no, we'll support that because we want people to be in the classroom, we want them to learn. And that's the best way to have it happen. Otherwise, what, the teacher goes home and says, I can't teach because this is not safe for me, so I'll be remote? And then, you know, that, that's just, those are considerations.
Thank you. Joe?
Well, I think, uh, if you appropriate, if you try to sum this up and come up with a, a motion?
I don't know that we need a motion. I think that we can, uh, write a recommendation without needing a motion. The essence is that we're not really changing anything other than continuing to follow the CDC guidelines. I think we would need a motion if we are not going to follow the CDC guidelines.
It could be.
But I do agree that we need to summarize and give a recommendation to Jim and the A-Team.
Well, for instance, I don't think we came up to either an agreement or a decision on materials that might need to be provided and distributed. And I think the question was, can we get it all done by the ninth? Would it have to go a little bit further to do it?
Uh, it sounds like from the administrators, the consensus is the ninth is a little too close. Specifically where we have some contradictory information between what the superintendents were told and what the nurses were told. If we're going to have a clear and concise SOP, then that piece in and of itself needs to be rectified before we can move forward. That could be done as early as tomorrow. So the ninth is next Wednesday, so that's Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, four school days before the ninth, where the CDC says, go ahead and change to optional if you choose to, right? One day to get the clarification, um, from the difference between what you folks were told. How long do you think it would take to make an infographic to send home? I'm thinking it would be relatively quick.
I've said my full-time job, sure. But yeah, I mean, I really, like, once we have those clear guidelines, I mean, minutes really, to like, make an algorithm, but make sure somebody can double-check it. Uh, but it really won't, I don't think, be a hard thing to do once we have clear guidelines.
Okay.
So.
How long do you think you would need to contact your families?
I think it will take me a long time. It's just one more step that I know I really need to do.
Okay.
Um, and I think, again, once we have clear guidelines.
Yep.
Um, because I, I don't think I, and maybe I can, but in my mind, I'm thinking, I can't send that home and ask parents to make a decision if they don't have clear guidelines about what we're doing.
Right. Yep.
So I would like to have the clear guidelines and then give them that opportunity to say, here's what I would like my child to do.
Eric?
Yeah. So my name's Eric Roll. Uh, I just feel like we've been following the CDC guidelines all the time. Why are we now thinking of not? Uh, beliefs, I feel like, should not be pushed upon the students. Uh, however, as a teacher feels, I can't say that I would think that that same teacher would not be going to the grocery store where half the people, if not more, are not wearing masks, they're going on vacations. I mean, people are living their lives every day. If, if they don't want to be around a group of people, then unfortunately it's time to change positions. Uh, it's happening everywhere. I mean, people are leaving jobs at record rates. I am a self, self-employed, own my own business, can't find workers. Uh, I, I know what everybody's going through, and I feel it. I just feel that. I just feel that if, if we've been following the CDC guidelines, we should continue to do that. That's pretty much it.
I mean, the only thing that parents are considering right now about, that would be different from what the information that we received today was whether we start this mask optional on the ninth or after. Not, not going optional. I think that's a foregone conclusion at this point.
One more, can you just? I have two children in grade school. As far as the comment of policing, personally, it's the parent's job in my eyes. If your kid's coming home and you're not getting a dirty mask every day. I mean, my kid literally looks like he ate a bar of chocolate. It's pretty easy to know if your kid's wearing a mask or not. I don't think it should be the teacher's job to police it personally.
I, I want to, I want to echo that. You have to come sit up here. I don't think I could say it any better. I'm, I'm listening to this and listening to the concerns being expressed by the other administrators. I, but I'm sitting here thinking to myself, how do I justify to the community? We've been saying all along, we're following the CDC guidelines. I hear what Jolene is saying. I know, I know the way that she thinks and how serious she takes her job. I understand what she's talking about. But we don't police kids wearing glasses. We don't police kids doing, you know, doing, washing their hands. We should be. But I, I get, I totally say it's not our job, it can't be our job to, to, you know, make sure they're wearing the mask if their parents want them to. I really appreciate Janice speaking up because I was curious to, I wondered what she was going to say. Have to still live in that experience. And I've talked to a couple of the superintendents who have gone overnight ahead of the CDC, you know, to make the decision about mask optional. And, you know, I think sometimes we get so caught up in trying to dot every i and cross every t that I think we, we sometimes get in our own way. I think from now to Wednesday, I was fearful they were going to say it's, it's effective today. And that, that would have been, you know, for me, I think about four days. I think about getting some clarification and I'm a little frustrated with the mixed messages. And I'm not doubting Melissa because she's always been a good source of information. But I, you know, that is so totally different. And I think I'll clarify those tomorrow. And I think that, you know, the whole notion of, of setting up clear protocol to our parents is really good. Letting our parents know is simple. I send out masks every, you know, all the time. So letting them know that it's going to happen, happen on Wednesday and letting them know that if they really want us, I don't even sure I want to do this, but, you know, letting them know that we're not going to be responsible for being the mask police if there are issues that we need to know about their children. Because remember, ultimately, the goal here, people, is to not have any mask ever moving forward. I know, I'm old and I can remember not having to wear a mask in school, although it feels like it's been, you know, very recent and it is very recent. But I don't know, I just, I would have a hard time understanding how do I respond to a community? Because regardless, and I, I very support the school committee here and I appreciate that. But at the end of the day, we're going to say, other schools went overnight. Why can't we go in four days? It's like, and, and, and as this gentleman said back here, we, CDC said March 9th. Why are you not following the CDC anymore? We can say, well, there's things that have to be put in place. I get it, but you know what? We're probably not going to get it perfect on March 9th. And that, that, I think that's painful for us to think about, but it's, you know, I think it's, I think it's real. We're not going to dot every i, we're not going to cross every t. We try to figure out who's, who's medically fragile, you know, from a, from a teaching standpoint, from a staff member standpoint. And we'll have to do the same thing we're going to have to do for those people moving forward. We're not always, whether it's March 9th or March 14th or March whenever, not always going to have masks on. We're going to have to always deal with people who have those types of issues. So I'm all in favor of going March 9th.
Erin?
How, how come as far as the teachers? Like, I, I understand if a child is, is having the symptoms, I should say, and they're sent to the nurse's office, 100% agree, throw the mask on until you get a negative or positive. How come we're not doing the same with the flu? How come things haven't been done the same with the flu?
I think, I can't really speak to that other than to guess and say that prior to COVID, you know, kids got the flu and that's just the way it was and it wasn't that big of a deal. And now that we've lived through this pandemic, we have a heightened sense of awareness, I guess. But I don't know that you would get a 100% firm answer on that from really anybody, even the CDC.
And I would say, I'll use myself as an example. Sunday night, I came down with this incredible cold. I don't, I'm not positive COVID. I test myself every day, thank you, for the free test. But when I've been in here, I wear my mask more now than I had, you know, most of the time. When I'm in the schools, I've always 100% mask, but in my office, not necessarily. There's always three of us and we're pretty well spaced out. But for the past three, since this whole week, I wear my mask all the time when I'm in there because, not because I have COVID, but because I'm, I'm, I have a bad cold and I don't want to give it to anybody. That's just, that's just, I think, being considerate. This is a good opportunity for us to teach kids about being considerate. And, you know, what Melissa's talking about in terms of kids that come that are symptomatic, put a mask on. You know, I, I have to tell kids all the time, it's been saying for the last few years, I don't wear a mask to protect you, I mean, me from you. I wear a mask to keep protecting me giving it to you. And, and, you know, it's the same thing. I don't want to give anybody the cold either. I don't want to give them the flu if I happen to have the flu. But we're living in a different world now. And so that may become, what you just suggested, may become the way we deal with it. But I'll tell you what, if a kid has, has the flu and they're, and they're nauseous, I don't want them to wear a mask.
There was a, a community member that has raised again a few times. Do you mind if they speak real quick?
Sure.
To think about the policing, the, oh, teachers don't do policing. Well, teachers probably know and superintendents and substitutes, anyone. Even though you're not supposed to be policing, you still are, you're still, the parents still hold you liable. They could maybe sue you or go to the school and cause a lot more havoc than is necessary. And also superintendent stated too, oh, he wears a mask to protect you from him. If everyone was like that, that'd be great, but that's not how everyone around us works. And you can't always, and that's, you can never control everyone around you. But I just have some, some frustration, I guess. I think it's great if you're going to work, it's like a way to get the masks off children and make it work for everyone. But I just, I still, it gets a little frustrating when you have nurses here and people that are nurses outside of this and they're also the ones that take their time outside of their full-time jobs to do SOPs, if I guess that's correct. And we're, they're telling us kind of what they think, hey, if we, March 9th, if we don't start the mask, it's coming off, we'll have accurate numbers. We can then make it out, a rhythm that's more accurate. We can have time to talk to our teachers, the community, get people more aware of what's coming. Why do, and I understand they follow CDC. I know your kids, you hate wearing masks, you hate cleaning them. I understand all, all of that.
Oh, I don't like cleaning.
Okay, well, then you can wash all of them. No, but I guess why do we have to jump on March 9th just because CDC says it? And CDC, we've seen through the last year and a half, two years almost, they, they come out one, one week or something and then they're wrong. So then you think, why do you want to keep doing this to children? Like, we want, it was said, we will make the change, we want to make it accurate. So we're not going back and forth. Our kids one week wearing it, next week, no. They're going to get so confused, they're already confused and frustrated. But if you have a change took too fast, sometimes it's more of a mess. You go too fast forward without proper documentation or procedures, you're actually going to make it worse, even though it's convenient at the moment. In the long run, do you want to go back to where you don't have classrooms? Because kids are in the pool or whatever the rules are, if that is accurate, and they'll know that for tomorrow. But I guess, I don't know, that's just last I'll say about it. And I know you want to, you want to finish up and close. Thank you.
I think one of the things that we kind of all have seen in the last two years plus is science as it actually happens, right? A lot of the times, what we had been seeing before that was the results of the scientific process, not the scientific process as it's happening, which is what we're living now, is the scientific process as it's happening. And so, yeah, there's a lot of two steps forward and one step back. And that's going to continue to happen because, again, we are not making a decision for one family. We're making a decision for hundreds of families, right? And the CDC is, is using the best methods that are available to make a decision for millions of people. Billions of people. So, yeah, there is going to be forward and backward. There is going to be sometimes rapid changes. That's just the way that science works. And while, yes, we would like to say, on March 9th, we are going mask optional. It will not change before the end of the school year. That's not realistic, right?
I'm just saying, you have nurses that say, hey, give us COVID three weeks or even administration, give people time, so please get some of those, you're, you're self-stressed as far as how much time. You can't keep pushing back, pushing back. But maybe like through a one week or two, deal with COVID, what, and reach and find out. Because he said two, he, this is an administrator, administration. He is paying for information. So why not get, click and reach and come back next week or other than this guy? But how does it, you're not just rushing into it, don't let, okay, two weeks, we'll have more stuff. We're going to go forward to that. Let's prepare now so that way you're not going back, going a week and changing, more changes. She said algorithms, right? She wants more after patient to make it, because I could be useful if you send it home and always change again, so like that one, the parents may, which we don't have. I'm just saying, to make it hopefully less stressful in the long run, why not wait until we move back a week? That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
And I think change will work.
Thank you. Joe?
I'd like to make a motion that, it's actually.
Not expecting one.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to reaffirm that we are going to continue to follow the CDC guidelines.
I don't think we need a motion for that. I think that we can just have a consensus agreement that we continue to do what we've been doing and that we, I think in the conversation that we've had with the administrators and with Jim, that the four days will be enough time, especially when he is able to confirm the information discrepancy between what the nurses heard today and what he heard. Once that really big piece is taken care of, I think that all these other pieces will fall into place rapidly.
I agree.
And I, I, I really don't think that we need a motion to say we're just going to keep doing the same thing we've been doing, which is following the CDC guidelines.
Well, I respect or we disagree because I think it's important for the community to know that we've investigated, spent a lot of time talking about it, but it's from other people. But I think it's important for them to know that we are continuing our pathway and that we're going to continue to follow the CDC's guidelines. It is appropriate to reaffirm what you're saying. I don't think that this motion is out of order. So that's what we're thinking about.
Thank you.
It's necessary.
I think it will be in the minutes that we have this discussion about continuing to follow the CDC guidelines and that we reaffirm our decision and our commitment to them.
Undoubtedly.
But the point, well, I don't think you can reaffirm unless you take a vote.
No, you can, you can do a poll. Tommy, you already said you agree.
I agree.
Catherine?
I still have my concerns that I want to make sure there's a comfortable timeline for the education and information and that producing these pieces. And I, I don't see the urgency to hurry yet. I totally think you can follow the CDC guidelines. It says Wednesday is when it begins to be mask optional. And for our community and for the education of our students, we want to give ourselves a few days to make sure that we do it well and have most success. So I still think it would be great to wait till Monday. That's what I think. To give people, I mean, everybody's already still crazy. Like you said, you're already a full-time job. Wouldn't it be nice to have some time? And maybe it's not necessary and maybe it's not needed, but I, I just think it's not something. I personally think it shows a better message that we're with them and the time that we need to do it right, we're going to take that we're, there's CDC guidelines, that's the date that you can do it. And then let's think about what our needs are as a community. And I think it also to students, it sort of sends a message, there's a certain feeling about masks off, woo-hoo, life's great. And there are still pieces, like, I actually did have a question about, like, what if somebody's ill at home? Can the student come to there and wear a mask?
That is part of the.
Right. So I think there's a lot, and that's going to take time, like, it is.
No, it'll be done tomorrow.
That will be done tomorrow.
Yeah, but I think it takes time to communicate to people and for people to ask questions and for parents to be informed. I, I think that takes time.
So the real question is, what I'm asking, what I'm asking is, do we want to go away from following the CDC guidelines? Because if we make the decision to go away from them, this school committee has voted on multiple occasions to not follow the CDC guidelines, but you've done it through an affirmative vote. So while I don't necessarily agree with what Joe is saying, well, actually, I do agree. He's saying follow CDC guidelines, we should take a vote to reaffirm that. I don't think, I agree with, with the chairperson that it's not necessary. The only thing, the only reason we would take a vote is if we're choosing to go away from.
Right.
And, and, which is what you're saying, you're saying instead of saying the ninth, which is what the CDC guidelines is saying.
Yes.
We, we pick a different date. That's a different motion.
And that would require a motion.
Yeah, that's going to, that'll be, that'll be interesting. I hope you don't do that.
So taking a consensus here.
I think we should follow the CDC guidelines.
With the ninth. Joe?
Oh, yes.
With the ninth?
I don't disagree with Catherine. But I think what I've heard is that some people think it can be done by the ninth, okay? If that doesn't happen, then we may have to make an exception because I think all the parts that we want to do should be done. Question is.
Melissa, what's your reservation?
So in the meeting today, Emily was very clear that the SOP will come out on or after March 9th. So I just want to, and that's what she said and that's what Nurse Jeannie is saying. So if, if it's not, my only concern is if it's not out on the ninth and we do this optional masking to, you know, and not, that's fine. But what do us nurses and administration follow when we have a positive case? Do we follow the 216 one right now? But it talks about, it, it's going to change because right now it's talking about universal masking as an option. It, it will change. I don't know the language. It's supposed to follow similar, like with, that, that's my biggest holdback on what do I follow?
I think this reservation with, not with you. Because you're, you're the messenger and I appreciate that. But that whole notion, the biggest change over the last three weeks or so is that notion of uncoupling, that there's not a, it doesn't matter what, what schools are following. They used to be, up until a couple of weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, that if you were not universally masking, you had to do contact tracing. And the, the CDC very specifically uncoupled those two. Any type of protocol you put in place is not tied into contact tracing. Contact tracing was a specific decision of the school board or the schools to do that. And so it makes no sense and that's, I think that needs to be clarified. But I, if it's not what I, what I heard and it's, and it is what Emily Follen is espousing, that's a major contradiction. And I know there'll be a lot of superintendents who'll be very angry if that's the case because this is, this is the cornerstone of our, of our support for moving in this direction.
I don't disagree, Jim. I was being, we sat there for an hour shocked and unsettled. And it was a hard meeting to sit through.
I saw the, I mean, I got the list of questions from, from Jeannie today and, you know, that's what I was going to talk about tomorrow, but, you know. I, I just don't, I guess I would have, somebody, if we're going to, the real question is whether we're going to follow the CDC guidelines or not going to follow the CDC guidelines. And if we're not, that will take an affirmative vote of the school committee to do that. And getting it perfect for March 9th, it's probably not going to happen. Probably not going to happen. But it wasn't perfect when we started masking in the beginning. You know, it's, it's, it's the reality of what we have, we deal with. We just, we have to deal with it, do the best we can.
So I guess my question to the school committee is, does it make sense to pause instead of on Wednesday going mask optional, doing it on Monday, the 14th? So that that gives the potential for two more days to get the SOP from the CDC or the CDC and the DOE and get information ready to go out to families? Or does it make sense to go with the ninth and? Or does it make sense to go with the 9th and hope that we have the right information and not have to change anything when we get the SOP? Tiffany?
I guess I'll just do whatever the administrators think is best. Do you want Monday or night better?
Administrators, including Jim, do you think that pausing until Monday, the 14th is a better decision for things that you need to receive and get done? Or do you think that the 9th is fine?
If this information isn't coming out until the 9th, I don't see how we can stay anymore. I don't. If we have, if we have all the information that we need, then I think it would be great to move forward on the day that, that we should, you know, that the CDC has designated. If we don't have that information, I don't, I don't know how we can, if someone can explain to me how we can do it, I'll, I'm in total favor, but I, I just don't, I don't know how you can move without that.
I think I feel the same way, but I, but I think because, I feel as though I'm going to have a lot of concerned parents. I just think the grade school, I think, you know, our three schools are all very different. And I'm just concerned that I'm going to have a lot of concerned parents. And I like the idea that we don't have to, I, I like what Erin said about, you know, parents need to be responsible and see when the kids come home and know whether they're wearing their masks or not. But I also think I have teachers that are going to want to know who's supposed to be wearing a mask and who isn't, because they wanna do, you know, grade school teachers always wanna follow the rules, generally that's how it works. And I still feel like I need to find out from families what they would like, but I like the idea how Erin said, parents need to be responsible for knowing whether the kids are wearing the masks, so just putting on there that, you know, we'll do our best to support your decision. So I like that part of it, but I still feel like we're gonna have a lot of concerns if we don't have clarification.
So I was hoping to be a hearer of, say you didn't have to wear the mask.
That's not gonna be the case. I would think that if the superintendents are meeting tomorrow and they have, don't have clarification that they feel to move forward on the 9th, then actually I would request that the superintendents make a clear, I don't know what to even call it, but call in the commissioner of the education department in Maine and say, what, what are we doing? I mean, the CDC is saying this, what is the DOE gonna say? And we need to know this by the 9th, because I really do think it's unfair to ask our kids to go beyond the 9th. I really, I mean, I, I suspect that the vast majority of the kids were hoping that the vote tonight was to be mask optional tomorrow morning. So it's, I mean, as I told the teachers today, our kids have been very good at the high school about wearing masks. I mean, every once in a while you just have to get on them a little bit, but, I mean, they wanna be there, so they're gonna do what they have to do to be there, but they truly were hoping, I just got that sense walking around the building for the last few days that they, you know, tonight was the night that the masks were gonna come off. So it's gonna be all heartbreaking if we go beyond the 9th, and it's gonna be even tougher.
I appreciate that. It sounds like, far in high school, the administrators would prefer to wait until we have the SOP, which Monday, the 14th should hopefully give enough information, enough time for that to happen. Because that does not go directly with the CDC, we do need a motion to change the masking protocol to the Winthrop Public Schools to mask optional effective on Monday, March 14th. I will entertain a motion.
Someone?
Do we second? Do you have someone who needs to second?
Joe, can you generate?
Joelyn.
Can, can there be an extra piece added to that, that if we are ready by the 9th, that we will go the 9th and not wait until the 14th? Do you know what I'm saying?
We could make a friendly amendment to the motion that says at the latest, the 14th, or whenever we have the information.
Yeah, so we can go as soon as the 9th.
Yep.
If you're ready, yeah.
We would entertain a friendly.
Did you say or sooner?
Or sooner, if the SOP is provided before then.
Yes.
Well, I like that, Monday at, at the latest.
Yep. All right, any discussion on the school board? To the motion at hand, which is the 14th at the latest, earlier.
Earlier being the 9th.
The 9th is the earliest.
I guess, I'm just wanting to really make sure that the education communication piece is factored in in the amount of time and not rush that, because yes, we had to wear masks overnight and everything changed, but we do have some time to make what we think are the best decisions for our community. And we do have time. And yes, it would be nice if we had our mask off yesterday, but I think we do have some flexibility to do it right, and we wanna make sure we're already over, where the students are, like, there's a lot going on. So just to add something else that causes, I just think to be mindful about the time that it takes for change, for people to talk about things, for families to get together and people are working, people are busy. I just think, I, I'm still just this, the rush of it, I, I don't like rushing either, so maybe that's just a side issue. I always think good decisions are made better when you're not rushing. And so that's what I think, like, there's this state of mind of this, like, rushing to do something versus taking the time to say, okay, you know, the CDC has said, you know, it's after Wednesday, we can do this, and so I don't really feel like we're going against the CDC. The CDC says, you know, on Wednesday we can, it doesn't say we must, on Wednesday it doesn't, it just says we can. So we're saying like, okay, we can, we wanna make sure we do it right, we wanna make sure we're respecting all the faculty, the teachers, the families, the, like, so that's sort of where I just weigh in, I'm not rushing.
I'm gonna ask you a question, and it's gonna sound really, I don't know.
Well, let's go with it.
Okay. Do you have any kids in the school system now, or have you in the past five years?
In, yes, in Winter. Not in Winter.
Okay. So one of the things that we have available to us here is a blast system, telephone, email and text, right? So what that could say, and Jim will craft that if that's the way he decides to go, is be on the lookout for this information, right? So that it doesn't all have to be out to the parents on the 9th or the 14th. It could come a day or two after that, but it could give them the heads up, this is happening, this is coming, be on the lookout for more information. Okay? And I think I'm not quite as concerned as you are because of that, right? Because we have the opportunity for, for Jim to do that. All of the administrators have the opportunity to email every single parent who has access to email this information, and then they all have the opportunity to send something home in their student's backpack or, or school books or whatever. So I think part of the notification is really just getting that blast out to the families that says, hey, this is a change, be on the lookout for more information, right? And then in the next four days, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine days, that's the opportunity for our administrators and our support staff to put together whatever that communication is going to look like and make any tweaks that may need to be made once the SOP is received, so that we can get that information out as soon as possible. Does that sound or feel any less worrisome?
I mean, I don't know if I'm worried, I just think people need time to talk about this, and I think it just takes time. And we're dealing with children and changes, I think that takes time, and we're very busy, people are busy and, you know, everybody has time that night to come home and really help their children and say questions, and teachers talking to students, and just making sure people are all on the same page and supporting one another and making sure that, you know, we wanna make sure this is not a peer pressure situation and that people are making the right decisions and, I mean, these things, I just think those conversations take time. And as a teacher and a parent, just being, that's where we can weigh in on this, like, children follow the CDC, but, that's so, I mean, it's not whether I'm worried or not, I just think that that's something, it's a.
Okay, okay. So it's a, it's a valid concern, right? I think all of you administrators have heard it, right? And we're charging Jim to work with you to make sure that communication to the families is clear as possible. Clearer than mud, less clear than distilled water will probably be the truth. And, and hopefully we can get that as quickly and as clearly as possible. Yes?
I also think I support your idea of the blast, because you're right, we can, you've done it before, see the website for this information, and it's almost immediate, really. So if that algorithm happens and we don't have time to get it in the mail for everybody, just with like a pool testing, you can print it right from the site and you could send it with your kids the next day. So I, I, that's a great thought, too.
Yeah.
This hasn't come up yet, Kids Club, school sponsored. I just, I just wanna make sure there needs to be a point person at Kids Club, whether it's Lonnie or Jody or what have you, and we can have that conversation, but I just wanna bring this up when there's a COVID positive, I'm talking about not mask, you know, they're gonna follow what we're following. But when that student comes back between day six and 10, they have to mask. So when they go to Kids Club, there needs to be a point person, and I just want you to be aware that this is something that you voted on to have Kids Club as a school. I can hear. So nothing we need to do today, but I just, you know, I'm happy to communicate to whomever regarding this. But again, it is a, you know, it's a touchy topic, too, I think.
Thank you. I think we made that decision in the past, that the club would be a school sponsored activity, so that they will be following whatever decisions are made. So I, I think it's good to remind the rest of the administrative team that that's something that needs to be on their checklist. Is there any other?
That brings up, I just asked a question. Does this affect the drama program?
It affects everything.
If we extend it to the, to whatever it is, is that gonna affect your mask or not mask now?
No.
That's all fair. No, we're already invested in that clear mask, so that we can see the actors anyways, but that's okay.
We'll make them wear them then, you invest.
No!
No! Okay. I'm joking. Any other comments from the school committee that we haven't already discussed?
I have a comment. It's, it's just a reiteration, it's kinda where I started and where I would like to end, because it's, I understand people's frustration and their desire to move forward quickly, especially as people around us are making this decision. I just wanna reiterate for the recording that this has never been a political decision. This is 100% about a public safety issue and whether, just because we might disagree on sort of win or whatever, this is, this is going to change. It's not changing because of anything political. It's changing because the people who we, who we trust to lead us in decisions about the medical profession or the pandemic are making this recommendation. It's not political.
Thank you. Yeah?
Sorry, I just, for me, if we've been able to, as adults, go out in the public with no mask for the last six to eight months, why is it that our children haven't? Obviously, no one here knows that answer, but that's just a feeling I have as a parent. People are going to amusement parks and places, I, myself included, I go all the time because I can. And I do bring my kids, and I do bring them without masks, I'm sorry. And I have lost people in my family to COVID, so I'm not saying that I'm not, you know, feeling sympathetic for it. I just feel our kids are at the least risk statistically for having adverse side effects. Why punish them?
And that actually is one of the things that included in this information from the CDC and the DOE, was that very thought that adults have been without masks for quite some time. So that was part of the decision, making the scientists that we trust included in their, in their thought. Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Okay. Those in favor of?
Can you read it? Can you read it?
Of changing the masking protocol for the Winthrop Public Schools to mask optional effective on Monday, March 14th at the latest, but not earlier than Wednesday, March 9th. All those in favor? Opposed?
I'm not a fool, he died there. I'm new at this, so hang on.
So abstaining would mean that you have some kind of conflict in interest?
I don't have a conflict.
So you, you would need to make a decision one way or the other.
Then I think I do, honey.
Okay, four?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Unanimous for those of us that are here?
Can I just say, say one thing?
Yeah.
I think that Catherine made a very good presentation about things that we needed to do in order to make this effective. And I think we've seen that here tonight in the discussion. I personally feel that, I hate going beyond the 9th because the CDC has said that, and I think people already expected that maybe tonight we would rule for tomorrow, but we kept a consistent flow, and then, and so I feel a little guilty about going along with it, but I don't go along with it. I go along with it because it actually makes common sense. We should get these things done, and the friendly amendment provided us with a way of saying that if Jim does get it done, if we else gets it done, then we will do it on the 9th if that makes sense.
I think, Joe, you bring, you bring up a really good point. And you may or may not have heard me say this before, so I'm gonna say it to you. One of the things that I appreciate about the school board is that we have really weedy, lengthy discussions, right? And I said that in my email, come prepared, we're gonna talk for a long time. I appreciate that we are able to have that debate of thoughts and information before we make a decision. I think, as I stated earlier, we don't wanna make a decision that's going to just be a fly-by-the-seat-of-pants kind of a decision. We always try to be thoughtful in all of the decisions that we make, especially when it resolves, revolves around our students' health and safety and our, our staff as well. So thank you all for that, those of you at home, those of you here, school board, I really appreciate that. So next order of business is regarding performance contracts. As I alluded to earlier in my opening comments, we did meet, can I say who they were?
Yeah.
Okay. We had interviews today.
No, you can't say who.
With two companies.
Yes.
And, I can say the one that we.
You.
Okay. And we, as a eight-person subcommittee, Joe, Jim, myself are on that committee, along with some community members who have industrial knowledge of what we'll need for the performance contract, met and asked the same 12 questions of both companies. And then we had a discussion after we met with the second company, and we had a seven to one vote that we would refer to select Siemens to develop a performance contract for consideration by the Winthrop School Committee. So I will take a motion from the committee to select Siemens to develop a performance contract proposal for consideration by the Winthrop School Committee.
Subdued.
I need a second.
Second?
Okay. So just so that you're aware, now that we have a move in a second, this does not mean that we are married to actually entering into a performance contract with Siemens. What this means is that we are telling Siemens, you now have our permission. Siemens. What this means is that we are telling Siemens, "You now have our permission to audit us and make a presentation to the school committee and specifically to the subcommittee to tell us what you actually think you can do, how much it will cost, how long it will take." Okay? So this is not the shake of the hand, "Thank you, Siemens," where it business. This is the shake of the hand, "Thank you, Siemens, now tell us what you can do for us so that we can make a, a decision about whether we want to move forward or not." We've been talking about the performance contract for five months now?
Yeah.
At least. As a reminder, we had the energy audit done by an external company two years, two plus years ago. And since Joel has been in his new role, he has identified some, some significant and some not as significant things that need to be addressed in the district, whether it be all, you know, all in one, one, one school building or across the whole district. So what we will be asking Siemens to do is to put together a proposal to submit to us about how much of that they can actually help us with. The way that a performance contract works is that it's lengthy. It's like 17 or 20 years worth of a partnership with a company and realizing any savings to energy or, or operations over that time period. If the promised savings aren't realized, then the Siemens, if we agree to go with them, once we see their contract proposal, if they don't meet those promised guarantees, then they would owe the school district funds to back that up. Okay? So this is a big decision that we make. Both of the companies that we met with today had really good things to say. It was not a really quick and easy decision for us to make. They were here for a good, I don't know, half an hour, forty minutes after the second, second interview discussing pros and cons of both of the companies. And ultimately, with the majority rule decision of selecting Siemens to present to you folks and for you to either approve or decline us moving forward with that process. Is there any discussion before we take a vote, Jim?
Yeah, I just want to add that the committee that interviewed the two companies today has also agreed that when, before the proposal comes to the school committee, that they will sit with, again, in this case Siemens, to review the proposal and ask any clarifying questions so that you get a recommendation from them about accept or reject the proposal at the time.
And, and just one second, Joe, because I just remembered, there are some engineers on that subcommittee, along with some code enforcement-related individuals and some business officer individuals. So there are, there are some significant, you know, mental powerhouses on that committee. Not, I, I would have been very uncomfortable if it was just us making this kind of a decision because we don't have that knowledge. But our, the committee that we put together is, is pretty robust. Joe?
Just make a couple of comments, having participated in it and being the one that did not vote for the individuals because I just want to explain it a little bit. When you enter into a performance contract, we're basically looking to take and fix a lot of things. And in some ways, we're trying to pay for most of it through energy or it, it doesn't matter whether it's energy, it could be efficiency, but through cost savings. That's what the goal is. But you still have to put up money for something like this. For me, it was a hard decision because we do need it. There's no if, buts, or maybes. I participated in the same thing, type of thing, a decade or so ago. And I think it brought some real value to our system. In fact, we're continuing to actually improve some things based upon what we did a decade ago. But number one, in making this presentation, we did not really have a proposal from them of what they would do. That wasn't quite the process that we had this time, but it bothered me personally because I am always concerned about what does it really end up costing you? It will cost us something. And I was really looking to be able to have some figures where I could make some determinations based upon what they were saying it would cost us to put this performance thing together. We will get that later and the, the school committee will listen to that. And I'll ask at that time some of the questions I might have asked if I had the opportunity today. I was very pleased that the committee, however, did address two issues. One was that I want to see local people used in the sense of they get hired to do the job. I mean, these are engineers. They're going to create what needs to be done, but who does the work? And in many cases, we could, they could bring in their own people. I want them to use local people first, especially the ones that pay our taxes to run the school system. And then the second, and, and actually, they agreed to it. So don't think it's, they said they will do it. They will hold on to it, I hope. And the, the third thing is on the proprietary issue. Those of you who are mechanical more than me know that we're attempting to get this thermostat to take and talk to that heater over there. And you have software involved with it, you have proprietary software. What if it breaks down? How quickly can you fix it? How quick, how much will it cost? And sometimes materials are used that only can be used and fixed by a certain amount of people. Whereas there is a trend today, some of you put together things where you can buy something that can talk to the other thing, but it doesn't need any proprietary software. It just automatically happens. It's kind of like those headphones I use at night to watch TV half the night, not disturb us the house. It's not that difficult to put it there. Years ago, it had to be one set for this type of TV. Those were three of the areas that I looked at. My vote was really based on, I just like, I wish we could have gone a little bit further, a little bit deeper. But that's okay. I will support this motion because these are good people. And I'm hoping that it will all work out well. But it just, just was something that I had to do because I'm really concerned about costs of a lot of things and where we're going and what do we have money. And it's not just here in the school system, it's the entire economy and the way we're spending money, how we can afford it. And so those things enter into a lot of my decisions.
Thank you. Any other comment before we take a vote? All those in favor of asking Siemens to, to selecting Siemens and asking them to develop a performance contract for consideration by the school committee? Okay, so vote. Thank you. I will be in touch with both of the companies tomorrow to advise them of that decision. All right. 4.3. I will entertain a motion to approve the following policies for second reading. IHBAC, the Child Fund, IAA, Service Learning, IHBAA, Referral, Pre-Referral of Students with Disabilities Referral, and General Education Interventions, IHBAA-R, the Referral, Pre-Referral Administrative Procedure, and JICA Student Dress Code.
Submerge. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? These policies are all in your packet. We have read them all for a first reading. Is there any discussion before we move them forward for a second, I think?
No.
All those in favor?
Didn't Catherine do a great job?
She did, she did a beautiful job.
Mine was five o'clock.
You okay?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Moving on to new business. This will be our 23 budget discussion.
So this is the biggest reason that you see these wonderful administrative faces. And Josh is hiding away back there, back there. But until we adopt the budget, you're probably going to see them. And unfortunately, they couldn't all be here. But I gave you, I sent out a lengthy draft, which I don't seem to have myself.
It was a second piece. It was an attachment. Here, I have it.
I have that. I thought I sent you guys the, nope.
This one?
None of you appear to have it.
I might have.
The one that, the detailed, long, it was unlegal.
No, we don't have that.
All right. Well, you had the summaries, which is really what's really important. You had the, the overview. And I'll find out tomorrow why you didn't get the rest of it. But basically it.
Wasn't it just in two pages?
No, no. It was like 40 or something pages.
Oh, the booklet you had.
I was probably.
We did, we did get that.
Yeah, we got that last night.
No, he's updated it since.
Well, no, I haven't. No, I sent that to you.
I brought it, but I thought.
Yeah, I sent that to you. And realistically, what it, what this two-page document does for you is sort of explain very quickly what the changes are. And just for shock value, I'm going to just share with the public that the request budget initially came in, this is essentially what we almost call a wish list type of budget, came in. And really, it wasn't because I think the administrators have done a really good job of, of being practical in their requisitions. But that budget came in at almost 15%. A number that we knew was not going to be acceptable to the public. So.
Can you equate 15% to a number?
For what, the tax purposes?
A monetary number?
Well, it's 1,750, 1,752,000 additional dollars from the public.
Thank you.
And it takes our budget from 12 million to almost 13, almost 14. So the, again, it's really important, that's why in this, what I put in the draft, two-page draft, is kind of where things stand and where things have changed. So I sent you that pretty colored one that was dated February 9th. And that says 14.56%. At the bottom of that, well, first of all, in the middle of that, you have the Adult Ed gas at a budget. And you also have school nutrition, which Aaron will probably be the first to tell you is really a guess because we're still intending to feed everybody free and that's a whole different issue, which I hope we don't get into tonight. But at the very bottom of that paper I gave you is the revenue side, which if you look from the first one I gave you to the February 28th one that I sent you, that hasn't changed. It's not, it's probably not likely to change.
Well, from February 28th, it hasn't changed.
Right, right, right. Bottom, bottom, bottom line in the green has changed because the numbers up top have changed. So we're just going to run through real quickly. The overall increase of dollars to Winthrop through our different revenue sources is actually up by 229,906.14. I'm sorry, that's the net result from what we refer to as ED279. And actually, that is the 249 out of 614. Ultimately, through all of our revenue sources, sum up, sum down, the net positive gain for the, for the Winthrop taxpayers is 229,906.14. And so when you apply that against the proposed budget, now I'm looking at the February 28th page, the net result is not 15%, but 3.55%. And this, and then the two-page document I sent you was sort of the, you know, rough explanation of why. We are in, we are, we are in a second year of a teacher contract that had to meet the state minimum salary levels. And so that was a significant increase for, for staff. We are in the middle of negotiating for support staff and I can't talk about that because it's still in negotiations. But obviously, we had to put money in there as well for that. And so salaries and benefits make up about 90% of our budget. So it's significant. The other thing that you should know that's in here right now is a 10% increase in health insurance. We're hearing, you know, this is the time of year where, where you start to hear numbers being thrown around. People are basically saying they don't anticipate it'll be anywhere near 10%. It'll be more like 4%. But I will tell you, from a budgeting standpoint, if, say, it comes in at 4%, we're not going to cut the budget back to 4% because we always have people that change plans. So if it comes in at 10%, I mean, if it's 4%, we'll probably cut it to 6%. But that still is going to be a, a net savings on top of this of, say, an additional 60-plus thou, almost between 60 and 70,000 dollars. So I guess what I'm saying to you guys is that this 3.55%, which I've already worked through with, with Jeff Cobre, I, I think is a, is a reasonably acceptable number. In the bottom line, which I don't know why I didn't put a percent up there, but the amount to be raised locally, even though the budget is up $427,000, that's what the 3.55% equals, which is, and you subtract the 229,000 that I mentioned that we're getting in additional funding, the net impact on the, the Winthrop taxpayers is 172,206. So that's less than 20,000. And by the time we're done, it'll probably be closer to 130. So unlike other budgets I've done in the past, I wanted, the administrators are here so you can ask some questions. But I can tell you, the ones that are here, Mark, Jolene, Sue, they're not, there's not much that's being asked for. Mike is here, his budget is up quite a bit. But that's really because of things, Joe kind of mentioned this earlier, things that we need. We need a new phone system. We need new cameras. Those are all in there. And we have a need to get the technology budget to a place where we aren't limping along, that we can, we can, we've done, Mike has done a great job and his people have done a great job, the administrators have done a great job of using Essar funds and using other things to get our technology stuff in this district up to, you know, up into a really good place. And now we have to have funding in there that will essentially allows us to keep replicating that and enter into leases and, and, you know, sort of buying new equipment, student equipment on a rotating lease basis and without having a tremendous impact on the budget. So it's a pretty big increase for, that would be under staff, students, it's Article 5, Student and Staff Support. That's up 177,016%. And the percents often scare people because it's, you know, they're, like, you can have a big increase in Article 1, which is our biggest, you know, our biggest, the number is bigger, but it's a small percent because it's being divided by bigger. No. So the other major, the other major difference, to bring this up, that point, if you look at the difference between the 2.9 printout and the 2.28 is in facilities, it's Article 9, Facilities Maintenance. In the initial one, initial budget that Joel submitted at my request, he put all those projects in there that were, that are, are needed for us to find some sort of funding for. And this suppose, this is really to let the school committee know and to let the public know in a, in a, in a different sort of way, that our needs are great. And so his total budget was up 1.4 million dollars, which doubled his budget. So his request was up 103%. Obviously knew that wasn't going to happen. It still is up almost 13% because there's still a need to try not to repeat the same issue. You know, Joe mentions, I, I wasn't here 10 years ago. I don't know what the investment was 10 years ago. I had a hard time seeing that. And once we correct the issues, like the deficits in technology, the deficits in Facilities Maintenance, we need to be very purposeful about making sure we don't end up in that situation again. And it's going to cost us money. So those are the, those are the two major areas, technology and. So, those are the, those are the two major areas, technology and facility maintenance, that has dollar-wise big increases and percentage-wise big increases. But at the end of, the end of the day, the budget as presently stands is three-point-five-five percent. I ran out.
Thank you.
The nurse to the rescue. I had someone who saw me doing it earlier, and so these are my other, other cough drops. Thank you, Melissa.
Does anybody have any questions for Jim or for any of the administrators about the information that is on either the two-nine or the two-twenty-eight operation? Joe?
Couple of years ago, maybe three or four years ago, time goes fast. We did do a study of where we thought the school population was going to go in this community. And it basically was a flat type of increase. And there were many reasons for it, but part of that is what's going on. Flat was good, because the entire state is losing-
Yeah.
-population. And we kind of talked about, well, shouldn't future budgets reflect that we're flat? And I have two answers to that. Number one, it can't, because there are certain expenses that will go up anyway. But two, it can, because there are certain things you can do, or we may have to do, simply because of other circumstances, like not having the staff available to teach some of the classes that have very low enrollment. These students still need to be taught that, but they may have to turn to going to some kind of a video arrangement or perhaps attending other schools. But I bring that up, because it is a question within the community as to how many people do we have left in the school? We know that some people have left. They've now been schooled at home. Few people have gone to some other schools. But relatively, I know I had an individual with me the other day who was totally surprised at how small the school we are compared to when they knew the old Winthrop. And this, and the old Winthrop was after we had separated off all the Maranico people, because I was here when all of them were here. That was a different story. So, I would bring that up, because I think it's an issue that we have to defend. In some ways, three-point-five-five percent is very good compared to what some of the other school districts are proposing, no question about it. But it's more of, the pressure becomes on the school committee to make sure that you're meeting the expectations of your community too. So, I only bring that up right now, because, you know, the discussion will get a little bit louder as we go through public hearings, as well as meeting with the town council.
I think it might be important to have some of those numbers from the administrators of, you know, historically over the past three or so years, what's happened to your populations? Have they increased? Have they decreased or stayed flat? So that we can try to answer that. I think, you know, one of the things that we have come across that's out of our control is if we're trying to provide the same services that we have been provided, regardless of our enrollment, the costs of goods are different than they were. You know, so we, that is something that needs to be balanced and thought of. But I, I agree with you that our spending should not far outstrip our school population.
Said that, I would, I think we should basically just take over a couple of other districts and bring in.
Is there any other questions for any of the administrators?
Let me just give you this number for it. And while I'm doing this, let me just tell you that I also received some other texts. Tell me that Augusta is going mask optional tomorrow. RSU thirty-eight is going mask optional tomorrow.
Alright, thank you.
So, is the, the impact on the taxpayers from budget to budget is a one-point-four percent increase. I mean, the three-point-five-five is the amount of budget to budget increase. With the additional monies that we have coming in, it's a one-point-four percent increase.
Do we know if the town is planning on any type of significant increase?
I don't, Jeff hasn't shared that with me. I just know that he was pretty happy. And just for your information, April eleventh is when I present to the school, when I present to the town. I am also attending on April fourth. I don't remember why. I'll start with head. Oh, this is not really relevant here, but I've already brought it up, but I don't want to leave you hanging. We have, even though we're not funding our revolving renovation fund, we still have to go through the bonding process, which has been a pain. So, the town council has to approve that bond, which is not really a bond. We have to get their approval, because we're getting forgiveness for about fifty thousand of the ninety-four that we're spending. So, I mean, ninety-four thousand dollars worth of work for forty-four thousand.
And that's on the fourth?
And that's, yeah, there's no reason, that's gonna be very quick. But the eleventh is when I will be doing the budget presentation for the town council. It'd be nice if we had an approved budget before then.
Alright, we will-
And while you're looking at dates, you might as well get them all in there, right?
Yep.
The town council will vote on the budget in June, it's June sixth, it is June sixth. And then, the budget validation referendum, BBR, will be on June fourteenth. And it will be at the high school mark. They've, they've seemed to think that we've made the decision that all votes from now on will be at the high school. We won't be in school on that day, so-
What day, did you say it was?
Fourteenth.
Yeah, well, we're done tonight.
Yeah.
Unless you're seeing you and you're done with it.
They're all done, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before we move on?
Well, I, yeah, I know, I have lots of them. But Mike, this could be really, I mean, I don't know how, I don't know. To me, I would like to put this on the, on the agenda next time to vote. Where we'll hopefully have the results. And what it envisioned it saying is to approve this budget, whatever, however recommended for you. And then say adjustments can be made to this number if it reduces the budget. So, I'd like to do that on the sixteenth.
Anybody uncomfortable with having that on the, the agenda for next meeting? If you are uncomfortable?
I think it's very quick. It's a personal thing. I'm not sure I'll be here on the sixteenth.
Sure.
Well, not each, I could probably zoom in, but I, I think there are some, I think this needs to go to the public to get a chance to speak about it.
But it doesn't go to the public until after you vote on it.
Until after we vote on it.
Yeah.
But, okay, what, alright, they'll explain it, though. You don't allow the public to have a say on how we might vote on this?
You should. No, we don't have a public vote. We don't have a public participation in the budget, except by turning here. I mean, that's why you're elected. You are the elected body, you're the legislative body.
We've always had hearings.
Not on budget. Didn't have one last year. I've never had one in eighteen years of Unisup attended. The day before, that's what I'm saying, once you approve a budget, you take it to the public. In an hour's shoe, you have a public meeting to explain what's in, what's in the approved budget. You're the approvers. And then, the town council has to affirm what you, what you vote as the elected legislative body. And then, the town, the town people get to vote on it as part of the budget validation referendum. I, I understand, Joe, I totally do, and I, and I respect. And also, not gonna sound like I'm gonna say that here. I respect your desire to involve the town in everything we do, but that's not realistic. And this budget is not the town's to create, it's the town's to support. It's your job as the elected officials of the town to put this stuff together. To the extent that you guys want to go out there and share this information and get feedback and bring it back here, I don't like that. I don't think that's your job as school committee, but, you know, some people operate that way, and that's fine. You're elected. You'd no more invite the public committee to, to weigh in on the budget than you would expect to go to Augusta and sit in there while they do on the budget for the state. Just don't do it. You're, you're elected to do your job.
But I have a chance and a best to take and stand up in a committee and make a statement, ask questions.
The public is invited to any of our meetings to do that.
That's what I was talking about. That's what I mean by-
It's on the agenda.
Okay, so they can come to that meeting, make any comments there.
Sure.
Yeah.
Which is what I was really talking about.
The agenda is, is made public while in advance of the meeting. People can decide to come in person or by Zoom and voice their opinions, concerns, questions. I don't, I don't think that we need to have a special meeting for it. Is that what you were asking for, though?
Oh, no.
Okay.
No. No, I, I want to make sure the public can have some input before we vote.
Yep, so they, they can come to the meeting next on the sixteenth?
The sixteenth, right.
Yep. Okay, any other questions or comments before we move on to the next thing?
Do you wanna vote on the sixteenth, because I went and voted against it.
We're not gonna vote. We're not voting. I was just asking to people feel comfortable having that on the agenda.
You won't be able to vote on it until, I mean, it has to be approved before you can, you probably suspect you would die.
Okay, moving on. To adopt the Winthrop, I will entertain emotion. To adopt the Winthrop Public Schools fiscal, uh, yeah, no, school year, twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar.
I read that one. You're reading it.
We wrote fiscal year. FY.
Oh, you did, yeah. I, I motion to adopt.
You, you motion? Okay. I need a second.
Second it.
Thank you. Is there any comment on the draft agenda that's in your packet? It was given to us last meeting and again this meeting?
I will change that cap, and you said school year, twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar. Thank you. I explained this to you guys before. This is getting a little more, in actual surprise, the, I'm not surprised, but if I were an administrator, a building administrator, I'd be getting increasingly frustrated with how little control we have over this, given that we have to follow the CTE calendar or suffer ramifications for doing that. Career Technical Education, CATC in this case.
This calendar offers a total of four early release days for the year. The commitment that we made this year was that the Wednesday early release days on full weeks of school would only last until the end of this school year and not beyond, without significant public input. So, this calendar does not continue the every week early releases. It offers four, one in October, one in December, one in March, and one in May.
And technically, the last day of school is a half day as well.
Yep, so the one thing that is significantly different, yeah, from this school year to next school year is that Jim has built in five extra days for potential snow days. If we don't use them, then we will end school earlier than that. If we do use them, they're already built in, so we don't have to say, well, I know we told you the last day would be this one, but we're gonna keep going. Which was, is a position we were potentially in this year. For those of you who may not have heard, we did have the two days in November forgiven, so that we don't have to make those up at the end of the school year. So, that is good news, but I don't think that that will be made available to us next year at all. So, there are the normal vacation days, as they always have been, built into this calendar, with no changes for that. New staff orientation on August twenty-fifth. Two workshop days prior to the first student day for race one through twelve. And then, pre-K and K starts after the Labor Day holiday. Any questions, concerns, comments about this calendar?
And I have gone through the process of, my, my obligation is to meet and consult with the associations, and we've done it.
Okay, so, all those in favor of adopting the school year twenty-two, twenty-three calendar? Raise your hand. Okay, it's a vote. Are there any public comments, Mike?
Yes. So, is a snow day a traditional snow day, like it used to be?
No.
It would be remote?
The intent is, what we did this year, what Kelly was referring to, is we didn't build in any extra days this year. And so, we had one day that we took as a regular, as a regular snow day. And so, we were gonna have to make that up. Last meeting, we changed the comp day on the fifteenth to, to make it a student day, so back to what the original calendar was. And the thinking is, here is, we're gonna still do remote days for snow days. But there may be, I mean, who knows, we could have another ice storm type thing where we lose, we don't have any power. And we, we might do one day of remote, but probably not do them all. So, this still permits us to, you know, to do our days remotely when we can and give us five days if we have some sort of catastrophic thing where we can't do remote and we end up doing the tradition. And we just felt it would be, the public would respond better to, if it says we're out on the sixteenth of June and we end up getting out on the ninth, I think people will be okay with that. If we say we're out on the sixteenth, we get out on the twenty-third, I think people would not be so, so happy with that.
Fair enough, okay.
And hedging our bets a little.
Thank you. Any other comments before we move on? Okay, school committee comments?
Public, public comments?
Public comments.
That's what I just did.
Oh, you may answer?
No, I asked them at first.
Yes, you were after me. You did that. I think I'd like to take the time to reiterate what Kelly said earlier and how very important it is that we have rigorous discussions in our community that are respected, respectful and respected. And I think that's really well done tonight, and I'm excited about moving forward with more votes.
Add one to me.
Done, okay, Joe?
I don't have any, either.
Karen? I know, you thought I was gonna go to online.
So, one act festival will be held at Wingo this year. It is March twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. As of now, there are, public people can come and buy tickets. But the way it works as of now is, it's kind of like three mini festivals all in one place. So, if you want to go on Saturday, you have to buy a ticket for the morning shows. And you can't go to the evening shows without buying a ticket for that. Like, there's like many separate festivals with different schools. So, we're really excited to get to host. And that's all I have.
Okay.
I don't really have anything, but I also just wanna thank the committee for everything you guys do in general, but especially these last two years. And, yeah, just what both of you said, for putting in so much effort to make good decisions to keep the students safe. So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't really think I have much. I am mentally exhausted after this week's meeting. I think, thank you again, all. I appreciate administrators, the community, members on the committee for being really thoughtful in your responses and allowing us the grace to make decisions that are safe for the whole community of our students and staff. So, thank you. There is no executive session tonight, so without objection, I declare the meeting adjourned at eight forty-seven.